Good evening, Cerritos residents and the members of our community. I would like to call to order the Monday, October 27, 2025, 7 o'clock PM, City Council Successor Agency Special Meeting. The invocation will be given by Pastor Rory Corrigan of Church of Church in Cerritos, and the pledge will be led by Troop 72. Please rise for the invocation and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance, Pastor Rory Corrigan.
Dear Lord, we pray for your presence tonight in this meeting. Do be with our city government. Please guide them and give them wisdom in their decision-making. Bless them and the residents of Cerritos. Be with our Sheriff's Department and keep them safe. We also pray for peace in our city of Cerritos. We thank you for all your blessings and be with us tonight. Amen.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Put your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Troop 72. Can you please tell us your names and what grade in school you are?
I'm Neil. I'm in ninth grade. I go to Cerritos High School.
I'm Soren Bang. I'm in sixth grade and I go to Gozolvas Elementary.
I'm Aria Jane and I go to Whitney High School and I'm in eighth grade.
My name is Nikhil. I'm in eighth grade and I go to Lexington Junior High School.
Thank you, Troop 72, and thank you Pastor Rory Corrigan of Church in Cerritos. Madam City Clerk, will you please conduct the roll call?
Council and Agency Member Hong?
Here.
Council and Agency Member Pulito?
Here.
Council and Agency Members Say?
Present.
Mayor Protem and Vice Chair Johnson?
Here.
Mayor and Chair Yokuyama?
Here.
The next item is 5A Presentations. Business Spotlight. Southern Glazer's Wine and Spirits. Will you please come up? Southern Glazer's Wine and Spirits is the world's preeminent distributor of beverage alcohol, building brands for moments that matter. The multi-generational, family-owned company has operations in 47 US markets and Canada, as well as brokerage operations through its Southern Glazer's Travel Retail Sales and Export Division in the Caribbean, Central America, and South America. Southern Glazer's Wine and Spirits operates 37 distribution centers with a total of 15 million square feet of warehouse space, and it makes 6.7 million customer deliveries annually to more than 250,000 customers. Additionally, the company distributes 11,000 brands representing wine, spirits, beer, and beverage suppliers. In 2025, Southern Glazer's Wine and Spirits was nationally recognized for its workplace culture, leadership, and commitment to diversity. The company continues to emphasize responsible practices across all areas of operation. Southern Glazer's Wine and Spirits built its original facility in Cerritos in 1978 and has called the city of Cerritos its California headquarters since relocating its main operational hub from North Hollywood in 1982. The company currently employs approximately 1,600 team members in Southern California. Southern Glazer's Wine and Spirits of California is located on Valley View Avenue here in Cerritos. Their website is southernglazers.com, and they have social media accounts on X, Facebook, and Instagram. And thank you for coming. Tell me your name again, please.
My name is Robert Pavone, and it's an honor to be here, and for me, it's kind of...
Robert, what's your position?
Oh, I am VP of Operations for the West Region.
Thank you, Robert Pavone, and I'm going to please give you the mic. Please tell us about Southern Glazer's Wine and Spirits here in Cerritos.
Okay, yeah, Southern Glazer Wine and Spirits is, I've been with the company since 1979, so I've been in the Cerritos location since 1981. It's amazing company. I've worked for Mr. Wayne Chaplin as the owner of the company. Worked for him for obviously been 46 years, and it's just been a great community to work with. I think Cerritos, I've dealt with other cities, obviously, being part of the West Region, but I gotta say, this is the best city to work with. You know, all the projects that we've done, we did an office expansion, we did a warehouse expansion, and it's always been an honor to work with the city, and we pride ourselves in working with all, a lot of local vendors throughout the city also. So again, thank you for the honor to be here, and again, I'm just representing the owner of our great company, so thank you.
Okay, so thank you, and thank you for being our City of Cerritos Business Spotlight, Southern Glazer's Wine and Spirits. We present you with this proclamation from the City of Cerritos, and Council colleagues, would you please join us for a photo? Hindu Heritage Month. And, you know, one thing about, ever since I got elected in 2017, I have been honored to serve with my Commissioner since 2017, Pat Patnaik. Will you come up and join me in this celebration of Hindu Heritage Month? Commissioner Pat Patnaik. The City of Cerritos recognizes October as Hindu Heritage Month. During this time of celebration, the city recognizes the cultural, spiritual, and historical contributions of its Hindu community. Major celebrations such as Diwali, such as Diwali, Navrati, and Dussera. Is that right, Pat?
Very correct.
Dussera often take place in the month of October and help promote inclusivity and understanding by highlighting cultural performances, educational events, spiritual discussions, and various activities. Cerritos is home to one of the largest Diwali celebrations in Southern California as Los Angeles County Supervisor Janice Hahn sponsors the Festival of Lights at Kenaby Community Regional Park. So, so first, I'd like to please call up in celebration of Hindu Heritage Month, Rajaswari R. Gadisali. The Cerrito City Council would like to recognize Ms. Rajaswari R. Gadisali in honor of Hindu Heritage Month for her continuous efforts to promote the arts and Hindu culture, the empowerment and support of women in South, women of South Asian descent, and cultivating unity among all Indian-American organizations. Ms. Gadisali's efforts and leadership helped to bridge the gap between cultures within the community. Congratulations, Ms. Gadisali. Would you like to say a few words about your leadership in the Hindu community?
Thank you. Hello, everyone. I would like to take an opportunity to thank Mr. Mayor and Mr. Commissioner here, and actually, I grew up here, and ever since I've been a little girl, I've always been very active in dealing with cultural things regarding Hindu and Indian exchange programs. And I've done several, you know, university immersion programs where we have exchanged cultural things with Chinese, African, and Russian, and it's more about diversity and enjoying the different cultures and also teaching them about our own cultures. And thank you very much for this proclamation. Thank you.
You're welcome. Congratulations. And in honor of Hindu Heritage Month, the City of Cerritos and the Cerrito City Council presents you Rajaswari R. Gadisali with this proclamation. And Council colleagues, will you please join me to take a photo? Will Vijay Patel please come up? The Cerrito City Council would like to recognize Mr. Vijay Patel. 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 Thank you. Good to see you, Vijay. The Cerrito City Council would like to recognize Mr. Vijay Patel in honor of Hindu Heritage Month and the efforts of his foundation, Shivaji Maharaj Antra Rastriya Panvar, also known as SMAP, S-M-A-P. I'll use that from now on. SMAP cultivates a community of leaders, unity, and community service by providing networking and leadership summits and cultural programs within the city of Cerritos. Congratulations, Mr. Vijay Patel. Would you like to say a few words, please, about your leadership and Hindu Heritage Month?
Absolutely, it will do. Thank you so much, Mayor, for this honor. Honorable City Council members, appreciate the honor, hard-working staff. Thank you so much for your support, Commissioner Pat, and the rest of the Commissioner. Appreciate your recognition. I'm here representing not only SMAP, but also many other organizations like HSS, Peace Center, UIASC, VHPA, IASH, OBJP, SAHA, ICS, MMLA. The reason I'm saying this is I'm just one of the members who is representing the community. There are more than a dozen organizations that are active in this city, very actively working, a lot of good work. I'm proud to accept this on behalf of all these organizations. Hinduism is the oldest civilization in the world. It teaches us to see the divine in all beings and the walk of path, Dharma, righteousness, truth, and service. Here in the City of Cerritos, we are representing those values through community service, education, and cultural activities. Whether through volunteerism, yoga, medical camps, festivals like Diwali, Holi, Hindu Americans have contributed to the city's inclusive spirit and vibrant culture. This proclamation affirms that the diversity is respected and celebrated in the city of Cerritos and, of course, in this incredible country, United States of America. Thank you for the inclusivity. It reminds us, thank you, it reminds every member of our community that their heritage is a source of pride and strength and that their contributions matter deeply to the shared story of Cerritos. On behalf of the entire community, dozens of organizations, thank you all for this honor and making us feel part of the family. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Patel. Hindu Heritage Month, I'm honored and so happy that the City of Cerritos and the Cerrito City Council is celebrating the diversity of our city. And here is a proclamation for you, recognizing you, Vijay Patel, in celebration of Hindu Heritage Month. Council colleagues, will you please join us for a group photo? And then after this group photo with Mr. Patel, if we can take a group photo with the other honoree and the community who came here to celebrate with you and her, okay? Okay, so can the friends and family of Mr. Patel and Ms. Gadisali feel free to come, and we'll take a group photo in celebration of Hindu Heritage Month and in recognition of Mr. Patel and Ms. Gadisali. Filipino-American History Month. Filipino-American History Month. The City of Cerritos joins communities across the country in observing Filipino-American History Month. Beginning in 1992, the month of October has been dedicated to celebrating the rich history of Filipinos in the United States and to the recognition of the important cultural and historical contributions that Filipino-Americans have made in our country and in the communities we call home, like our very own city of Cerritos. Mayette Centeno, can you please come up? Hello, Mayette. Hi, Mayette. Mayette Centeno has been a dedicated resident of Cerritos since 1978 and has served as president of the Filipino seniors of Cerritos for 14 years, providing unwavering support and care to elderly community members. In addition to her leadership there, she has also served as president and chairman of the Board of Filcella, a community organization that promotes friendship, unity, and assistance. and assistance to families during times of need. Mayet has also actively supported the Cerritos community through her involvement with events such as the Festival of Friendship and the Let Freedom Ring Celebration. Congratulations, Mayet Centeno in celebration of Filipino-American History Month. Mayet Centeno, will you please say some words about your leadership and Filipino-American History Month?
Mayor Frank, Mayor Protam Linda, members of the city council, thank you very much. I would like to call on Luz Banayad, Luz Banayad, Nelly Fraho, Eugene and Susan Lapinid, Christine Johnson, my daughter Christine. I have with me tonight Filipinos who have enhanced our who have enhanced our traditions, our traditions, and at the same time assimilating the American way of life. I have here with me Luz Banayad. She owns a cozy restaurant in Lakewood that caters to the Filipino palat and she had received a recognition from the city of Cerritos. With me here is Nelly Fraho, Vice President of the Filipino Seniors of Cerritos. She's always there for me, helping me. And of course, I have my sister, my brother, and my daughter. And I thank you very much for the support of the Filipino community. We will always be here to help our city the best that we can. Thank you very much for this recognition.
What a wonderful speech. Thank you for sharing your fellow Filipino leaders in our community of Cerritos in celebration of Filipino-American History Month. And on behalf of the Cerritos City Council, Mayet Centeno, here is a proclamation honoring you, Mayet Centeno, in celebration of Filipino-American History Month. Council colleagues, will you please join me to take a group photo?
Good to see you.
Make sure you can be seen, everybody. Okay, right here. One, two, three, one, two, three, one, two, three, one, two, three, please stay there. One, two, three, one, two, three, and one more. Friends of Mayet? Mayet's gonna take a photo, congratulations. Good to see you, congratulations.
How are you, those girls? Thank you.
No, no. One, two, three, one, two, three, one, two, three, please stay there. One, two, three, and one more, one, two, three. Congratulations to Mayet Centeno. And can someone please raise the screen? And we are now going to watch a video. Let's wait till the screen is all the way up, please. And then we will watch a video. Let me put my mic down. When the screen's all the way up, we'll play the video. I wanted everybody to see the wonderful performers who have performed in our Cerritos Center for the Performing Arts multiple times. The Philharmonic, will you please come up? The Philharmonic. The city of Cerritos recognizes a cappella group, The Philharmonic, as pioneers in the music and entertainment industry in honor of Filipino-American History Month. Kicking off Filipino-American History Month with a recent performance at the Cerritos Center for the Performing Arts. The Philharmonic is a five-piece vocal group, four of them are here today, who was featured on NBC's The Sing-Off and in the hit movie Pitch Perfect 2. Their blend of multiple musical genres and 90s nostalgia has led them to over 150 performances nationwide, providing inspiration and entertainment to communities across the United States. The city recognizes the following members of The Philharmonic for their contributions to the music and entertainment industry. If you could raise your hand. Jules Cruz, Vijay Rosales, couldn't make it. Joe Caigoy, Nico Del Rey, Trace Gaynor. And will the manager, Rose Buado, are you able to come up? Manager. Manager Rose Buado. So we have proclamations for you, but if you could please share with us what it's like to be Filipino leaders in the entertainment industry and having this, having a month of celebration of Filipino-American History Month and you performing in the Cerritos Center for the Performing Arts during Filipino-American History Month.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. You know, we started this group 12 years ago now and back then, we were all just young kids who wanted to get on TV, I'm not gonna lie. I just really wanted to be on TV. But the more we got on that show and the millions of people who watched that, kind of the outpouring we got from the Filipino community, Filipino-American community just has kept us going for 12 years and realizing that we stood, you know, kind of seeing five Filipinos onstage on TV kind of stood for much more than what it was. So it's carried us all this way. So we appreciate all the support and all the love and we're gonna continue to keep doing what we do, which is spreading the joy and showcasing Filipino talent and trying to reach out as much as we can and showcase the community. But, you know, I think Filipino-American History Month and coming back here and being celebrated, I guess, in like the cities that raised us is really, we can't compare it to what it feels like. So it's an honor to be here. Thank you so much for having us and we're gonna continue to do what we do.
Jules, thank you. So we have a proclamation for Jules Cruz, for Joe Caigoy, Nico Del Rey, Trace. No, he's right there. The youngest-looking one. Right? We have one for the manager, Rose Buado. And we have a proclamation for Vijay and we also have a proclamation for your group, The Philharmonic. So thank you for celebrating Filipino-American History Month with us. And can we please take a group photo with the city council? Thank you. Thank you to The Philharmonic and we hope to see you at next season, the next season of the Cerritos Center for the Performing Arts, okay? You got it? Okay. Thank you. So, Club Makaisa, can you please come up? In honor of Filipino-American History Month, in honor of Filipino-American History Month, the city of Cerritos recognizes Officers of Club Makaisa, Cerritos High School's Filipino Cultural Club. These members are commended for their active role in Club Makaisa and the impact that their work is having on their fellow students and the community. The city recognizes these fine, young students. I'm so proud of these student leaders at their high school. The Cerritos City Council is honored to recognize you for your service at your school. Thank you, Officers of Club Makaisa. And we recognize you for your contribution supporting the Filipino-American student community this month of Filipino-American History Month, Club Makaisa. So we have certificates and proclamations for you Officers of Club Makaisa, but I will please offer the microphone to your president, Ashley Kimbaw. Please tell us about the fantastic things that Club Makaisa is doing at Cerritos High School and in the ABC School District. And what are you doing during Filipino-American History Month?
Hello, everyone. My name is Ashley Kimbaw and I would like to say Happy Filipino-American History Month. I am very honored today to be standing here and on behalf of my cavi, I would like to say thank you to everyone for also acknowledging us and recognizing us for this month. Club Makaisa is full of a lot of activities and in Cerritos High School, we are proud to be volunteering at local fiestos and events around us, either in Cerritos or Artesia. And we are fortunate that we are also given the opportunities to be participating in many events and volunteering. We also have Hallo Halloween on three days. It's gonna be on the 29th, 30th, and the 31st. And what we do is we give away Hallo Hallo to our club members and also to the faculty members and teachers around our community. Hallo Hallo is a dessert and the Philippines, it's a really popular one. It's mixed with ice, there's beans, jello, and a lot of many other assortments in the Hallo Hallo. We also, during Filipino History Month, we also acknowledge the people that are like very popular in the Philippines and we also make sure that we make it known during our meetings. And we also explain the history behind Filipino-American History Month and make it known. I would also like to say and give a big shout out to our advisor, Madame Oliva, for giving us the opportunity for this club. She is a Filipino teacher in both Cerritos High School and Gar High School and we are very fortunate to have her both as a teacher and advisor in Club Makaisa. I would also love to thank my wonderful cabinet, who is here today, and also the people that are not able to make it today. And I'm really fortunate to have them as my cavi. And I'm also very fortunate to work alongside of my two best friends, Erin Legaspi and Kim Kapitan. We've worked together since our freshman year and I'm very fortunate to have been able to go with them throughout my four years of high school. I'm also very thankful for everyone here and also the parents and everyone else that was able to come over and visit us and support us throughout this way. Thank you again, Maryoka Yuma and everyone.
So, thank you, President Ashley Kimbaw. So we have certificates, so we have for Erin Legaspi, Kim Kapitan, Mark George, JD DeLeon, William Maranti Jr., Brian Lee, Carleen Cabrera, Andrew Adachi, Felicity Mabaza, Gianna Mejico, Brianna Barrio, Ava Ignacio. Ava Ignacio, Riley Pooter, and Isaac Domingo. Thank you, Officers. We also have a proclamation from the City of Cerritos, celebrating Filipino-American History Month, for your president, Ashley Kimbaw. And we also have a proclamation for Club Makaisa. Advisor, longtime advisor, Ms. Ryan Oliva, can you please hold the proclamation for Club Makaisa? Thank you for advising our students in our ABC School District, especially at Cerritos High School and Gar High School, Ms. Oliva. And city council, can we please take a group photo? Club Makaisa, congratulations. I know, I know. Keep it tight.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Well deserved. Keep it up. Great job. Great speech, Ashley. Thank you, Club Makaisa, the Cerritos High School's Filipino Cultural Club. I am very proud of the City of Cerritos and the Cerritos City Council for recognizing the diversity of our city and celebrating Hindu Heritage Month and Filipino-American History Month. And let's take a five-minute break. Five minutes. Thank you. We will next do public comments. I would like to recognize here in attendance at our city council meeting today from our very own ABC School District School Board, it's good to see you, President Ernie Nishi. Thank you, President Nishi, for attending our city council meeting. Thank you for your attendance at tonight's meeting. State law and our local rules do not support the use of profanity, hateful speech, or activity that disrupts the conduct of this city business meeting. If necessary, I will issue an initial warning and call for a recess to restore order. After that, the chamber may be cleared if disruption continues. The following comments pertain to all public comment periods on tonight's agenda. I will open public comments at the appropriate times on the agenda. Please be prepared to approach the podium and begin your comments at the time you are called. Public comments should be directed to the city council and made only from the podium during your turn. Please respect each speaker and refrain from any disruptive behavior or speech during their comment time. Public comments will be limited to five minutes per speaker. Agenda item six, public comments, should be limited to items on the consent calendar, closed session, and items not listed on the agenda but that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the legislative body. I will now open for item six, public comments. I see two names. If you would like to speak at public comment, please add your name on the pads. The pads are out there, right? And so we have two names, Samar Maluf and Ernie Nishi. Samar Maluf, you're first.
Good evening, Mayor Yokoyama, ladies and gentlemen. I know I look familiar to you. I wanna say thank you for the job you did for us on the streets where I told you. First, for the roaches, and second, for the reflectors and the signs on Pine Creek, Canyon Creek, and Indian Creek. But the problem is, today they were coming to remove the speedometer. But I talked to Jared and Alex, and I left you a message, and I said, during this Halloween weekend, I mean, it's impossible for them to remove it because kids, they will be on the streets, and people still coming, crossing from Norwak to Alondra. And I also told Jared, one night I was driving. It was 8:00 PM on Canyon Creek, and this person was flashing and honking and like move, move. So I stopped, and I said, do you live here? Don't you know that we have to drive 25 miles per hour? And if you live here, go to your home and park. And he said, move, or else I'm gonna call the police. I said, no, I'm gonna call the police on you if you don't live here. He said, yeah, I lived here. So I had to follow him. I moved, because he was aggressive. So I moved, and I said, no, I'm gonna follow him. He was driving so fast, I was following him. And then he took me out to Norwak, to Excelsior. And I said, of course, he doesn't live here. Then he stopped his car, and he came to attack me, but I left. So I told Jared, I know it's wrong from me, but I wanted to see why he's pressuring me if he was a resident, so I can report him. And second of all, when I told Jared, he said, you know, don't do it again, whatever. I said, Jared, we need sheriff. If they start giving tickets to these people coming from Norwak, they will change their route. That's why, you know, I'm fighting for this, because people, they speed. I have my ring, you know, I live on Pine Creek. And from my bedroom window, I see the speeding, and people are complaining, you know, for the speed. And when they speed, they scared, you know? Of course, they don't live there, I know, because the people who live there, now they are abiding. But the people crossing from Norwak to Alondra, Mr. Mayor, I mean, this is too much. I don't know what to do. So we want sheriff to start giving tickets.
Anything else, Ms. Maluf?
I swear, it will be the last time I will come here. I'm done. I'm really tired. I mean, I tell them, slow down, they say a few. This is ridiculous. I'm here all the time. And when I called to report, they told me there's a meeting, that's why I came. Sorry.
Thank you for speaking at a public comment. Is there anything else?
No.
Okay.
That's all.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Maluf. Okay. So city manager and Captain Strong, we heard from Ms. Maluf's concerns in that Granada Park neighborhood, especially on the through streets of Pine Creek and Indian Creek and Canyon Creek, and her concerns about the speed, speed reader that's in place and the Halloween weekend coming up. Could we please make sure we are reasonably putting our resources to address speeding in that neighborhood? Captain Strong, any comments?
Yes, sir. That will not be an issue. I can send some motor units up there to monitor traffic and give citations as necessary.
Did you hear that, Ms. Maluf?
Yes, I really appreciate it. I swear to God.
Okay. Thank you for coming and speaking at public comment.
Thank you so much for that.
Okay. Thank you. Ernie Nishi.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mayor Frank Aurelio Yokoyama and Vice Mayor Linda Johnson. I am honored to be here. Before you, I have several different roles, but my role here today is to talk to you about neighborhood watch and the efforts of one specific individual. and the efforts of one specific individual, Sahana Achary, who will come up. Sahana has been a volunteer. She is probably my youngest Neighborhood Watch captain, ensuring that we're safe. She does all the artwork, she does all the organizing, she does all of the work that I don't want to do. But what's remarkable is that she's young. She's barely 17 or whatever. And she's here interested in her community. She's interested in making our community safe. And so I just wanted to not just give it to her in some small back alley, but rather publicly in front of the entire residents of Cerritos to offer my thanks. She received an Assembly Certificate of Recognition for being a block captain, and this basically, I'll quickly read it. This is recognition for extensive contributions to the Neighborhood Watch, your volunteer efforts to inform residents of key issues, providing a technical framework to enable faster communication has made our Heritage Park District safer. On behalf of the 67th Assembly District, we commend you for your remarkable efforts, and I'm very proud to present this to her.
Thank you so much.
Okay, so what is your name again?
My name is Sahana Achary.
Say one more time.
Sahana Achary.
Sahana Achary. Yes, and President Nishi has been telling me about your volunteerism and service to our city of Cerritos and Neighborhood Watch. Congratulations. So Council colleagues, can we please take a photo? Can someone please put down the screen?
Thank you.
You want to come down here?
Sure, thanks.
Yeah. Okay. Are there any other speakers? Seeing none, I will close the public comment period. The next item is the consent calendar. Do we have a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, it was moved by Mayor Protem Johnson and seconded by Councilmember Sei. Let's vote.
The motion passes on a vote of five to zero.
Thank you. City Clerk. There are no public hearings scheduled for tonight's meeting. Item 9A, Water and Sewer Rate Study. City Manager, do we have a report on this item?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Good evening, members of the city council. Item 9A follows up on previous city council direction to bring back expeditiously the next steps necessary to consider an adjustment to our existing water and sewer rates. This follows a prior discussion that occurred earlier this year. We have completed a study and are seeking city council approval of the study and direction to proceed with the next steps for that process. The presentation this evening will be given by Alvin Papa, Director of Public Works. And following his presentation, he and the team, and I would be happy to answer any questions. Mr. Papa?
Thank you, City Manager Lopez. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the city council. My name is Alvin Papa. I'm the Director of Public Works for the city of Cerritos. Joining me today, I have Assistant Director of Public Works, Chris Kuber, and our Partner Consultant from Water Resource Economics, Sanjay Gwar. Today, we will be presenting the 2025 Water and Sewer Rate Study, including preliminary options for a potential low-income assistance program. At the end of the presentation, both Mr. Kuber and Mr. Gwar will be available to help respond to any questions. One thing before I begin, I'd like to reiterate that today's presentation is to present the adoption of the Water and Sewer Rate Study. This is not discussing the approval of the adoption or of any adjustments of rates. This is only the Water and Sewer Rate Study Report. So in the city of Cerritos, water and sewer rates have remained unchanged since July 2021. Prior to that, rates were increased annually for a period of seven years from 2014 to 2021. But those adjustments at the time did not account for capital improvement needs. To maintain service levels, we have relied heavily on general fund support. In October 2023, a $24.3 million general fund loan to the water and sewer funds were written off. Since then, the general fund continues to provide non-reimbursable funding support to the water and sewer funds. By the end of this fiscal year, we estimate that an additional $8.9 million will have been transferred to support water and sewer operations. This level of support has artificially kept rates low, but it is not fiscally sustainable. A revised rate structure is needed to ensure long-term reliability and financial stability. As such, the city council directed staff to initiate a formal rate study. In response to council direction, staff retained Water Resources Economics in February 2025 to conduct a comprehensive rate study. The original scope of work included reclaimed water. However, that portion has been temporarily suspended due to pending negotiations with the Los Angeles County Sanitation District for a planned emergency project. The primary objective of the rate study is to develop a five-year rate schedule that enables the water and sewer funds to operate independently without ongoing reliance on general fund support. Recently, staff presented multiple adjustment scenarios for both water and sewer rates. On July 28, city council selected Scenario 2B for water rates, which is a gradual adjustment over the five-year rate period. And on August 28, city council selected Scenario 1 for sewer rates, which includes a larger adjustment in year one with smaller adjustments in years two through five. Both scenarios prioritize funding for critical infrastructure only and gradually eliminate general fund support over the five-year rate period. During these discussions, city council also expressed interest in establishing a low-income assistance program. In response, staff directed WRE to evaluate options for a customer affordability program, which will be discussed later in this presentation. The slide you see above illustrates the fiscal impact of maintaining current water rates versus implementing the proposed rate adjustments. Under the status quo scenario you see there in red, this is where there are no rate adjustments adopted. The water fund will need approximately $68.9 million in general fund support over the next five years. This level of support exceeds the city's projected general fund reserves and is not financially sustainable. In contrast, the proposed rate adjustment scenario in blue significantly reduces general fund reliance. It phases support out over four years. Total general fund transfer would be limited to $9.5 million, with the water fund achieving self-sufficiency by July 2029. So this comparison highlights the importance of adopting a rate structure that follows industry-best practices, where water rates fully fund operations and capital improvements. Most water agencies use this approach to ensure financial stability, to minimize reliance on the general fund, and to maintain a reliable and sustainable water system, which all aligns with the policy direction set by city council. This slide summarizes the financial plan for the water fund for the next five years. The table that you see on the screen is also provided on page nine of the agenda report. This plan includes a 50% rate adjustment in the first year, followed by smaller annual adjustments. General fund support is gradually reduced from $3.5 million in year one to zero by year five. Projected revenues, operating costs, and capital improvement expenditures have been modeled to ensure the water fund reaches minimum reserve thresholds by the end of the five-year period. No debt issuance is assumed, and all projects are cash-funded. The slide you see above presents the five-year proposed water rate schedule, which was developed in accordance with Prop 218 and industry standard practice. This table can be viewed on page 10 of the agenda report. The schedule includes annual adjustments for two fixed meter charges and volumetric rates beginning this February. As mentioned in the previous slide, the most significant adjustment occurs in year one, with smaller steady adjustments in the out-years. Fixed meter charges have been recalibrated on meter capacity to improve rate equity. And this is to align with the American Waterworks Association, otherwise known as AWWA, with the AWWA guidelines. Additionally, the base minimum unit allocation has been eliminated, and this ensures that all metered water use is billed volumetrically. These changes enhance fairness across our customer classes and ensure that rates more accurately reflect the cost of service. This slide above compares our average residential water bill to those of neighboring cities. Our current rate is shown in yellow, with the proposed rate shown in green. Even with the proposed rate adjustments, Cerritos will remain among the most affordable in the region, and the average bill for a single-family residence is projected to stay below that of comparable agencies. And on the commercial side, even with the proposed rate adjustments, Cerritos will remain highly competitive. The average bill for a standard commercial customer continues to fall within our regional benchmarks. I would also like to note that the word "commercial" was incorrectly spelled in the agenda report, and this is on page 13 on Figure 3. It has been corrected on the slide before you. With regards to the sewer fund, this slide highlights the level of general fund support required to sustain the sewer fund under current conditions. Like the water fund, the sewer fund has relied on substantial general fund transfers to maintain operations. Under the status quo scenario in red, $12.1 million in continued support from the general fund will be needed over the next five years. However, under the proposed adoption of sewer rate Scenario 1, general fund support would be gradually phased out over the five-year period. Total general fund transfers would be limited to $3.6 million, with the sewer fund achieving self-sufficiency by July 2029. Like the water fund, the sewer fund should operate as a self-sufficient enterprise, with rates fully set to cover operating costs and capital costs. This is an industry best practice that ensures financial stability. It protects the general fund and supports the long-term reliability of the city's wastewater system. Above you will see the sewer fund proposed financial plan. It's also included in the agenda report on page 19. Under sewer rate Scenario 1, the plan includes a larger adjustment in year one, followed by steady adjustments through fiscal year 2029-2030. These adjustments are designed to fund approximately $3.9 million in critical capital improvements and gradually eliminate general fund support. All projects are assumed to be cash-funded with no reliance on debt. Reserve levels are projected to meet minimum thresholds by the end of the five-year period, ensuring operational stability and compliance with Prop 218. This slide presents the proposed five-year sewer rate schedule developed in accordance with Prop 218 standards. Under the scenario, the schedule begins with a larger adjustment in year one, with steady adjustments in the out-years. And as mentioned in the previous slides, these rates are designed to fund approximately $3.9 million in critical capital improvements and will gradually eliminate general fund support. It should be noted that there will be no structural changes to the sewer rate formula at this time. This slide compares our average sewer bill to those of neighboring agencies. Even with the proposed rate adjustments, Cerritos will remain below regional averages. The comparison reflects the city's continued commitment to affordability while transitioning towards a financially self-sustaining utility model. In response to city council's direction, staff proposes a water and sewer assistance program modeled after Southern California Edison's Care Program, which offers a 32.5% discount to income-qualified customers based on household size and income thresholds set by the CPUC. To ensure consistency and defensibility, it is recommended that the city adopt the same thresholds. As of October 2025, over 2,200 Cerritos households are enrolled in the Care Program with Edison. Staff conservatively used an estimate of 2,300 eligible households for budgeting purposes. And rather than a percentage discount, the program would provide a flat rate discount to help control program costs and provide budget stability. As part of the action today, staff will be requesting city council direction on whether to implement a low-income assistance program, and if so, at what discount level. This slide above outlines the next steps and key milestones. Pending city council's direction this evening, staff will finalize the proposed rate schedules and prepare the required Prop 218 notices for distribution to all affected property owners. A public hearing is scheduled for January 26, 2026, at which time the city council may consider formal adoption of the proposed water and sewer rates. Staff will also return with a refined low-income assistance program framework should council choose to proceed with implementation. If approved, the new rates would take effect beginning February 2026, with annual adjustments implemented each January through February 2029-30. This schedule ensures compliance with Proposition 218 and provides adequate time for public outreach and customer education. In closing, staff recommends that the city take the following actions. First, review the report and receive public comment. Second, provide direction regarding the proposed low-income assistance program. Second, provide direction regarding the proposed low-income assistance program by selecting one of the following options. Option A: Implement a low-income assistance program with a fixed bimonthly discount within a range of $0 to $40. Or Option B: Decline to implement a low-income assistance program at this time. And third, waive full reading and adopt the resolution approving the 2025 Water and Sewer Rate Study and set a Proposition 218 public hearing for January 26, 2026 to consider proposed rate adjustments through fiscal year 2029 through 2030. With that, that concludes our presentation, and staff is available to answer any questions and assist with council deliberation.
Thank you for the report, Alvin Papa, Director of Public Works. I also want to thank for this Agenda Report Drew Schneider, Chris Hubert, and Peter Kemp. Thank you for putting together this Agenda Report for the City Council and for the public. Do we have any questions from the City Council? Councilmember say.
Thank you, Mayor. Just for clarification, this is pretty new to me. You have three items on the dice right now. You have asked us to vote yes or no the implementation on low-income assistance, right? And then you ask for the rate, the range. Then you also ask if not. So are we also voting two at one time, right? Voting, talking about the water rate and the sewer.
Yes, thank you for the question, Councilmember Say. Yes, so the recommendation today is for council to discuss the information in this report. And then as part of that, for recommendation number two, that the low-income assistance program be discussed. And, you know, the first part of that is, does the City Council want to implement a low-income assistance program, yes or no? And if the answer is yes, then to help provide direction to staff with regards to the level of support from $0 to $40. And within the report, we've put in increments of five for the ease of calculation. And with regards to the third recommendation, it is to, there's two items in there. There is to adopt the Water and Sewer Rate Study, which is the report that was attached to the Agenda Report. And the second part of that is to set a public hearing date of January 26, 2026 for the proposed consideration of water and sewer rate adjustments.
So I just have one question, you know, since this process is kind of pretty new to me. You have four things on the table. Can staff, to just kind of clarify whether we are voting on all four items or go by one at a time? How do we do that?
I'll answer that question. Yes, the first one obviously would be to review, discuss, ask questions, open the comment to the public, close that, discuss that, and see what direction the council wants to move in. The first item for discussion would then be, in our estimation, the request for determining whether or not you want to approve a low-income assistance program. Vote on that one first. And if you are going to be voting on that, provide us direction as to what the discount would be. And after that is done, then we would move forward with considering the adoption of the resolution to approve the Water and Sewer Rate Study, as well as setting the public hearing date for the Prop 218 notice for the actual adoption of the increased water and sewer rates.
Okay, thank you. That's it, my question, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Hong, do you have any questions?
Yes. First of all, I really appreciate all the efforts that you all put together to come up with such a great report. And as us, when I look at this report, I think I have a question. Why, how did you come up with the estimate amount? And like, you were providing the information that we're going to balance out on 2029? And then, I know this is all estimated amount. Is there any way that you can review that? I mean, I know it's important that we have to increase the water rate, but I'm just trying to speak out for most of the seniors resident in Cerritos. They all have the limited income. So I'm just asking, with your experts and all your efforts, is it possible that to really looking into it, like say, okay, is this really that much money that we really needed? Or is there any way to make the number more acceptable and not so such a big impact to the resident? And the low-income program is wonderful. Thank you for providing that information. I think I'm all for that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Hong. I'll begin by answering the question, and I'll defer to Mr. Papa. But to answer the question regarding how do we come up with the number, the study, there was a comprehensive study that was performed, it's attached to the report, based on broad direction given by the council at prior meetings. One related to the water rate direction, another related to sewer rate direction. But in the staff report, we have a summary of specific capital projects that have been identified as critical. As the council mayor recalled, there was a discussion previously related to critical projects and then also non-critical projects. The direction was to focus on critical projects. Projects that if we don't do them, we could severely impact our infrastructure and not be able to provide water to our community from our local sources. And if that were to happen, then we would have to import water at a much, much greater expense. So we have a list of projects, both on the water side and the sewer side. I'd like to ask Mr. Papa to briefly summarize what those projects are, because those projects, the cost of doing those projects is the basis for the water rates that were calculated. So, Mr. Papa, if you can please outline what those projects are.
Yes, thank you, Councilmember Lopez. So those projects are outlined in the report, but I can talk, you know, at a high level with regards to the projects. The number one project that needs to be constructed is our Well C4. So Well C4 needs treatment. It's our largest well producer, and it costs approximately $16 million. That is the lion's share of what we need to spend. You know, normally, this is a project that would have, we would have saved up over the course of 10 years, pocketing money away to fund it. And we're trying to fund this in the course of four years. And so the number is high primarily because of the well. We have some pipe replacements, some valve replacements, a sand separator, and some other minor projects. But for the bulk of the CIP is to prepare to build Well C4, as well as preparing to construct Well C5. And the money included in the CIP in the next five years is for design only for Well C5. And later, we plan to accumulate funds to be able to pay for that. And one thing I do want to note is with regards to, is there any way that we can lower the price? There is not any way to lower rates any lower than we see now. The projects that we have are critical. If we fail to deliver these projects in the next few years, we're going to be spending more money to pay for water that is not coming from our ground underneath. We're going to have to import it from the state water project. And the cost of that water is over three times the cost, the cost to pump out of the ground.
Thank you. So my other question is, if the budget is over, because this is estimated, so if the cost is over the budget that you projected, how are we going to handle that as well?
Yeah, thank you for the question, Councilmember Hong. So if the budget is higher than we originally projected, we have several options. The first thing we do is value engineer. We look at the project, we figure out how can we make it cheaper. We can look at materials, we can look at design. Sometimes, there are other things that we can do. But also, as part of this effort, we're building up reserves. So the reserves will be there for an emergency. And those reserves will allow us to be able to handle projects that come in a little bit higher than expected.
Thank you.
Anything else?
No, thank you.
Councilmember Palito, do you have any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, I have a few questions. But first, I want to say thank you to staff for the report and to Mr. Papa for his presentation. I want to focus my questions on the Low Income Assistance Program. First, on Figure 2 on page 12, you give a kind of a comparison for all the different agencies and where we currently are and where we would be, given the proposed increase. Of those 15 other agencies, how many of them have low-income assistance programs? And which are they?
I know a few of them have low-income programs, but I don't have, we don't have the numbers on me. I don't know. If, it looked like, Peter, you have?
If I can add a little context, we're not sure of the exact number. We did do a survey of many of these agencies. Thank you for the question, Councilmember. I know that we did use the cities of Lakewood, Signal Hill, I believe Golden State Water, and a couple of others to help come up with our methodology and plan here.
Okay, that was Lakewood, Signal Hill.
I believe Golden State was one of the other ones we used as well.
And might you know at what percent level?
You know, I think there were five that we were kind of, that we were actually able to receive kind of the documentation that they use to implement their programs. And I believe they all ranged, they ranged from about $5 to $20 fixed fee. But kind of a $10 to $15 range was what we saw most.
Okay. So it's a fixed dollar amount, discount rebated?
Yeah, that's correct, and that's probably best practice was to not, you know, benefit users, some use disproportionately. So somebody that uses more water would receive a greater benefit if we were to do some sort of percentage as opposed to a fixed rate.
Okay. And I see that on page 22, Table 91, and you provide the preliminary analysis of potential low-income affordability program from a wide range of $0 to $40. But there really isn't any language as to what staff would recommend. Might be one that would meet the needs of those eligible. I think you're using a conservative estimate of about 2,300 single-family residential customers. What might be the level of need and might be the appropriate dollar amount to provide as a discount? And then also, if you could also comment on what might be sustainable for our general fund to bear going forward, since the whole idea of this is to try and become kind of self-sufficient and not really go into the general fund.
If I can help address that, so it was, Mr. Kemp mentioned that the average from the other agencies that we surveyed was in the $10 to $15 range. So we provided, you know, all the calculations just so that, you know, you wanted to go higher or lower, you could easily understand what the impact is. And to your point, you alluded to this, that this would be a general fund expenditure, not a water fund expenditure. And so this is, that is something for the City Council to consider. The Water Enterprise Fund itself, or the Water and Sewer Enterprise Funds, are intended to be self-sufficient. But with a policy goal of supporting low-income households, this would be an additional expenditure. And really, the council can decide what that goal is, and then we would just budget accordingly.
Okay, so the fact that the low-income assistance program, if we decide to pursue that, would have to come from non-restricted sources, i.e. the general fund. That's a consideration that this council has to take if it's our overall goal to not be dependent upon the general fund. We have to weigh that with how important the value of having a low-income program for those who are most in need. Seeing that affordability is really the issue for most folks today, not just the 20. I'm guessing way more than just the 2,300 households out of, what's the figure? About 15,000 households that we're using for this calculation? That seems to be a very, very low estimate as to how many households, you know, really live paycheck to paycheck. Yeah, yeah, there are some who are very blessed in this community, but there are, I think I may mention this in previous meetings, that we have seniors on a fixed income, we have a lot, we have agent in place, folks who are widows and widowers. You know, just a lot of folks that, I think, to be honest, that 2,300 is a low figure. I think that's just a low participation rate in the Southern California Edison program. I understand that that's a good model, you know, to go from. I mean, that's, you know, that's an existing program that you want to kind of align it with. But I'm curious, to what extent did staff really explore the real needs of the community with regard to increasing water and sewer rates? Or if that is just a best practice on how to do the analysis, just to align it with an existing program? I guess my question is, has staff considered that these figures that we're basing the analysis on are actually low-ball and not really reflective of the true needs of the households in Cerritos?
So because this is the number, the 2252 number was an actual based on folks who participate in the Edison program, we use that as a proxy. But to your point, if actually implemented on the water and sewer side, we would then know after the first year, after people begin to participate, what the actual interest is, you know, in qualifying for the program.
And in this program, I imagine that the cost, right, on the right-hand side, it says estimated annual funding required. I imagine that doesn't include staff time for trying to help promote that program so that we increase the participation rate to meet the true needs of the community. Am I incorrect in making that assumption? Or it is built in this cost?
Sorry about that. Yes, the cost listed on the right-hand side is just the discount cost, not including any staff time or materials.
It's the discount times 2,300 homes times six, six payments per year.
Just want to make that clear, that if we were really interested in providing a real robust low-income assistance program to meet the needs of those who are going to be adversely impacted by this proposed increase, we might want to consider how we, as a governmental agency versus Edison, which is a private entity, how we go about increasing the participation rate so that we don't have folks who are adversely impacted and then very upset with their city government. Those are the questions that I have for now and the concerns that I will have ongoing about how we mitigate the adverse impacts on the most vulnerable in our community who care about affordability issues. Thank you.
Good, good questions, Councilmember Palito. Thank you. Mayor Protem Johnson, do you have any questions, please?
I do. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thank you, Alvin, for the presentation and to staff for the report. I know the item before us today is to consider the Sewer and Water Rate Low Income Assistance Program. But I would like also, and I know it's been repeated many times, but I feel it's still important to... it's still important to educate our residents on what we are doing here with our water and sewer rates. And so if you could please explain why water services and sewer services should not be funded by the general fund? And explain that cutting funding to the library or the CCPA or any cultural programs in the city, which could be cost savings, but how we cannot put that in the water fund as the two funds are different?
Yes, thank you for the question, Mayor Protem Johnson. So the American Water Works Association, AWWA, that I mentioned in the presentation earlier, they are the leading professional organization for the water industry in North America. So they develop nationally recognized standards and manuals that guide the design, operation, and financial management of public water systems. And so with regards to how our rates were set, and most agencies in North America, they set the rates according to the AWWA manual, it's called M1, Principles of Water Rates, Fees, and Charges. And so in that, they state that utilities should establish rates that recover the full cost of providing service, including operations, maintenance, capital, and reserves. And on top of that, I do want to point out that on the AWWA website, they have a policy statement. There are certain policies, but with regards to their policy statement on financing, accounting, and rates, there's a couple of things they talk about. They say that water and wastewater rates should be self-sustaining enterprises adequately supported by cost of service, rates, and charges. They also mention that we should be able to provide safe, high-quality, and reliable service to customers. And those will be funded by revenues from water and wastewater rates and charges that are sufficient to pay for annual operation and maintenance expenses, to fund and finance capital costs, to maintain sufficient working capital and required reserves, and achieve desired financial performance metrics. And there's two other separate main points is, they state that we should be distributing the costs of, the costs of the service equitably. So that means per Prop 218, the, the water that a person uses, uses, they should pay for proportion, their proportional part of the rate. And then lastly, utility accounts should account for and maintain their funds in separate accounts from other governmental or other owning entity operations. And so the, the procedures that we've outlined today are industry best practice, and we're following what the majority of every water agency and city is doing.
Thank you, Alvin. I, I really appreciate that explanation. It's very helpful to us as a council. I know we've heard it over and over again, but it's always good to hear it again, and also to educate our residents on what we are doing here. Appreciate it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. So thank you for, you know, my council colleagues' questions, giving us more information and more details about what's about this very important matter that's before us tonight. And you know, what's concerning to me, looking at the big picture, is the fact that we've already hemorrhaged 30, over $33 million in general fund money, over $33 million of our, over $33 million of our Cerritos taxpayers' dollars, general fund dollars, have been hemorrhaged to subsidize the water use of our residents and our businesses. And that's only, that's through the end of the 2425 fiscal year. So I don't know if I saw it in here, what is the amount that we are going to hemorrhage in the 2526 fiscal year if we were to make no adjustment?
It's approximately $15 million for the water fund.
Just for the water?
Just for the water fund.
So how much is for the sewer?
Pulling up the number.
And I'm hearing surprise from Mayor Protem. That's $15 million would be hemorrhaged from our general fund if we were to make no adjustment.
While they're looking for those numbers, if I could provide a little additional context on that number, that would be assuming we were moving forward with these critical projects that are needed, as well as building up those reserves without, through general fund subsidies, without the increased rates. As we went through our budget season these past few months, there was direction from the city council to move forward with this rate increase, so we did build that into the budget as part of the plan to build reserves. So without that plan, the backup to that is general fund reserves to build up that, you know, over $10 million in reserves that we would need in the water fund.
So thank you, Peter. So your explanation is that based on the capital improvement projects that were approved in the 2526 budget, and where we are with our water utilities, expenses, and revenues, if we did not make a change in water rates and sewer rates, the 2526 fiscal year would require $15 million from the general fund for the water, for the, for the, the water expenses exceeding revenues, plus the capital improvement projects for our water utility? Is that the $15 million number for the 2526 fiscal year?
Yes, sir. And a big part of that would also be the reserve amount. So building up those reserves, as Alvin mentioned in his report, a big part of this water rate, rate increase is to build up reserves in the water and sewer funds. As the council's aware, we did adopt a new financial reserve policy earlier this year. And the reserve target levels for that would require substantial capital from the general fund without an increase in water rates.
Okay, so, thank you. So we just had a lot, we just discussed a $15 million amount for the 2526 fiscal year that would be needed to be paid by the general fund because of our water utility if we were to make no changes. The agenda report already makes clear on just, I think, the first one or two pages that we've already hemorrhaged $33 million plus out of our general fund to pay for, to subsidize water.
Water and sewer?
Water and sewer. Yep, water and sewer, over $33 million have already been spent out of our general fund to subsidize water and sewer use by, by our rate, our rate payers. And, you know, you, you, we go into that number, that $15 million number in your, in your figure one and your figure four, where you make it clear at the, the financial calamity we're facing if this council did nothing like the previous councils have done nothing since 2014, 2015. The previous councils have not taken any actions since 242015 to address the fact that our city was subsidizing water and sewer use by the rate payers to the tune of millions and millions of dollars every fiscal year, subsidizing it out of general fund monies. And that's why we're in the situation we're in today, and this council is stepping up to make the tough decision to address the future of our city, because if we don't address this, as I heard at a, a United States Conference of Mayors Water Council meeting last week I attended in Northern California, and the, the choices are either address the needs of your infrastructure today or face catastrophe in the future. So figure one shows the difference between doing nothing, like, like I said, like the previous city councils before this council have done nothing since 2014, 2015. It's been over 10 years since a city council has done something to address our water infrastructure and our sewer infrastructure. And if we do nothing, we're going to need general fund support of, of almost $69 million. If we do something, the general fund is still gonna, if we, if we do what's recommended by staff in this agenda report for the water fund, it shows a proposed rate adjustment of less than 10 million. So we're looking at the, is this right? Alvin, if we do something, if we do what's recommended in the staff report, we're looking at, over the next five fiscal years, subsidizing water use by, by about $10 million versus if we do nothing, we're going to be subsidizing water use for $69 million out of the general fund. That's what figure one makes clear, correct?
Yes, Mayor, that is correct.
Okay. And then general, and then figure four does that same comparison for sewer. If we, if this city council does what is recommended, the staff recommendation, based on the direction that this city council gave staff to bring back this study, if we do nothing, we're going to have to fund our, support our sewer fund with general fund money of over $12 million in the next five years. But if we do something, if we do what's recommended, it'll only be less than $4 million over the next five years, right?
Yes, Mayor, that is correct.
So even if we do what's approved, what's recommended in the staff report by staff, based on our direction to you to bring this report back over the next five years, according to this agenda report, we're still going to be using over $13 million in general fund money over the next five years still. Correct? To get, to get to a break even where the utilities, where the water, the water utility and sewer utility, the rate payers pay what, pay for what they're using over the next five years, we're still going to be paying for water and sewer over $13 million out of the general fund over the next five years, right?
Yes, Mayor, that is correct.
Okay, but if we do nothing, it's going to be $81 million that would have to be paid out of our general fund over the next five years, $81 million. $68.9 million for water, plus $12.1 million for sewer. If this council did nothing like the previous councils did for the past 10 years, we would have to pay $81 million out of our general fund. Is that right?
Yes, Mayor, that is correct.
Thanks, Alvin. So tonight, we approved on the consent calendar, our treasurer's report. And August 31, 2025, the balance of our general fund as of August 31, 2025 is $63 million. So we don't have $81 million today, do we? Right, Alvin?
Yes, sir, that is correct.
So if we did nothing, and our general fund was in the ballpark of $63 million, how would we pay that $81 million to fund our water and sewer over the next five years? What will, how would we pay that?
I'd like to preface this, thank you for the question, Mayor. To preface, say that I'm not a financial expert, but I say in these situations, typically cities would, would look at bond financing or issuing debt.
What do you say, Peter?
Yeah, we'll piggyback our Director of Public Works comments that ultimately, in order to provide that level of subsidy, it would mean cuts in other programs. And this is why it's so important to ensure that our enterprise funds are self-sustaining, so that the general fund is not, there, there's a large opportunity cost there when the general fund has to subsidize these activities. It's fewer streets that are paved, it's fewer trees that are, you know, replaced. A lot of general fund activities, public safety, these things that benefit the community as a whole, these things should be coming from general tax money, whereas, you know, the direct beneficiary of water rates are the users, and the best practice would be for their fees to support those services.
Thanks. Yeah, I remember the years that I was, when I got elected on the city council, 2017, I remember those years. And every month in our agenda packets for the city council meetings, and we would get the monthly treasurer's report, I remember looking at the general fund, and it would be nine figures. It would be $100 million plus. I remember those, those years. And we've been spending our Cerritos residents' taxpayer dollars on things without taking responsibility as a council on the future of our city. So I want to protect, as of August 31, 2025's treasurer's report, I want to protect this $63 million of general fund money that is supposed to be used for a rainy day, supposed to be used for capital expenditures, capital improvement projects, not supposed to be used for general expenses, not supposed to be used to subsidize water use and sewer use by our rate payers. So thank you for letting me confirm those numbers with you, Alvin and Peter, because I wanted to focus on the big picture, the big situation before us, which is our general fund is significantly being reduced year after year after year, where in five years' time, doing nothing, which is, which I, I'm pretty sure this council's not going to do nothing, but if we were to do nothing, we would be completely depleted, completely deplete our general fund. And then I heard Alvin say things like, well, at that point, you have to consider bonds. And, and it's, it's incredible that the city of Cerritos would have to be talking about things like that. So let's go to public comment. I will now open public comment on this item. Catherine Pasquale.
Hi, thank you. I was going to do without my computer, but I needed the document in front of me. So first, thank you, Alvin and Chris, for meeting with me. I, just as a teacher, wanted to make sure that some of the charts were displayed in a way that made sense to the public, and so thank you, Linda, for asking your question as well, to make sure the public understands. And, yeah, so I just wanted to thank you guys for making things more clear and making sure that people understand what's happening. And I feel like I better understand that, like, that we are fixing things up. I was a little bit worried after the first presentation that we were not doing the capital improvements that were needed with the plan that we chose, because it seemed like we weren't choosing the plan that had all the necessary capital improvements. And so I just want to make sure that we're updating things that are necessary to update, because I think it was our mayor who just stated that we can't just let things fall apart. And so I just want to keep, make sure that we're looking at that as well. And then for the low income rate payers, it, we should just note that, like, Southern California Edison has several different tiers of low income rate payers. So they have some where- So they have some where you can, um. You can get. What is it? Hold on. I just had it. There we go. Thirty two point five percent off your electric bill. But then there's another category where you can get eighteen percent off your electric bill. So they have like the really low income where you get the bigger discount and then they have the less low income. And so that might be what Councilmember Polito was referring to, where people might not fall into the one where they need the thirty two point five percent. But they might be right there on the edge where they might need to qualify for something still, but not that full discount. Um, I also know that with Edison, there's people who are on like medical devices, so they might qualify for something. That probably wouldn't apply to water rates and things like that. So it may be different. Uh, like considering rate discounts for Edison might not be the same for water. Um, so those were some things I was thinking and you guys said some of those things, but I had already signed up for public comment. So I thought I would just come and echo those, those things and thank you guys for your time several weeks ago when we met. So, thank you. Um, yeah, that's all.
Thank you, Catherine Pasquale. Are the, are there any other speakers on this item? Seeing none. I will close the public comments. Does the, does the council have any questions or comments? Councilmembers say, you have any questions or comments?
Um, thank you, Mayor. Absolutely correct. I remember back about probably, I think, two thousand. I was looking at the city's reserve money at that time. I believe, correct me if I'm wrong though. It's about a hundred thou, a hundred million at that time. And then now when I took this position, went down to forty million. I was shocked and I said, oh no, and then why me? You know, why we waited up to twenty three million dollar for this absolutely, is residence supposed to pay for? And unfortunately, it was meeting, it was misleading. I don't know who is meeting who and made us to become today. And in this situation, we have to, like, we have to be really hard to come out and say, hey, we have to increase your water. We have to increase this and that in order to keep our business going. Um, I wrote it down here, um, second. I say responsibility works both ways. You have the right to enjoy the benefit of the society or the city that will provide for you. But you also have the responsibility to contribute. And what you've been done, what I've been doing in the past, have I really contributed enough to the city to make my family become running a red? And I think all of us need to come out with some suggestion, come out with some, somewhere to pay to support the family, support our community. And for the low income, you know, there's no other, I mean, it's really hard to come out the, the really nice pictures of what is considered low income. And since there's something made already and staff also present the table tonight and range from zero to forty dollars. And I look at that and I think that looks very good to me, the rate and does help the people, the resident. But the issue is how do we, I know we have some, um, numbers there already from Southern California Edison. But do we do, this is very accurate information to the resident. How do we get them involved? If there's low income, if it their needs, uh, I just wonder how you get, get, I mean, because I know some, S E sometimes may not give everyone. Chance to apply, but how do our city can really get involved to every single resident if they are qualified for this low income affordable program?
Thank you for the, the question, Councilmember Say. Yes, we could, you know, do a little bit, um, more of a detailed, uh, study looking into this. Um, you know, given the time and, um, the budget, we had to do this study, you know, we kind of kept it high level. Um, but I think we could do a more in-depth survey, looking at our residents. It's very tough for us to find. Um, it was easy for us to find census data, um, but we had to use old data because, because of the government shutdown, the census site was down and we had to kind of work around it. Um, but also the, the program depends on not just the household income, but the household size and pairing those together. Um, to qual, to, um, figure out whether, um, households were eligible. Uh, we could also look at, you know, do a survey of our residents to find out, you know, other public assistance programs. I have a list here. Like CalFresh, CalWorks, Head Start Income Eligible Program, Medi-Cal, Medicaid, National School Lunch Program, WIC. Um, so there's a series of programs and if we're able to do. Have this, have the time to do a detailed survey, get that information, get the data and put together, you know, a more refined program. Um, then we could have something, uh, a little more tailored, uh, towards the city. Just with the, the time we had here, we tried to present something high level. Um, the, the most important thing is what is the amount of, uh. General fund support or non-restricted fund support if there's another fund that would be able to pay for this, that, that council would feel comfortable, um, providing. Um, so Ms. Pasquale has mentioned earlier that, that Edison does have a different tier. There is a FARA program. Which offers an eighteen percent discount instead of the thirty two percent. Um, but we, we opted just to pick one, keep things simple and, and really it's what is the level of general fund support that city council is interested in providing? And, um, based on that, we can develop something more targeted and something that, um, would apply more directly to Cerritos residents.
And with regard to, uh, the question related to, um, informing the residents or, or getting the word out. Um, we would do things like including, uh, information in the actual water and sewer bills. Um, we have a series of digital, um, media that we've been using lately to help get the word out. Um, the, I believe that the plan was in the notice related to this Prop two eighteen process. Also note the, uh, potential, um, uh, subsidy or, um, low income program. And then provide information on our website about how to get more info. So there's many ways to help get the word out to ensure that anyone who is qualified can also. Um, apply and then be considered for that discount.
Thank you. Um, the meals, the meals on the wheel also have a lot of information there too. A lot of local people receiving the free meal. From some program that you can also follow from there. Um, I really, um, thanks, Mayor Proton had talked about tonight. Ask you clarification about the rights using water and CCPA. You know, I heard a community, um, member also expressed their concern, asking why we cannot offer the same level of support as before? And why we continue to provide financial support to the Cerritos City Performance Center and the library? But I think the importance is that we clarify this for our resident, what the funding structure looks like. People need to understand there's something that we're funded by the state or, or county, but some of them we don't. Some of the things, the human needs, Alan Papa, you mentioned about it. And people need to understand that it's not what we want to give you rates. We want, it's something that you need to pay for. And you, I mean, we, as myself, I try to work as much I can to accommodate their needs to support. But however, dollars a dollar, red, I mean, you're on the red now and your budget, you have to think about something. Who you can cut, we cannot cut, who you can raise, who you cannot raise. So I am very support this one, the water and sewer rate study and, and I'm looking forward to vote for each item. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Hong, do you have any questions or comments?
Uh, yes, I have one more question. Okay, um, regarding the low income assistance program. Uh, whatever number we come out or we agree to, say that's pick a number, say, uh, fifteen dollars, uh, fixed by monthly discount. Then we're gonna need two hundred seven thousand dollars for that funding. So, uh, when you propose that increased rate, does that considering this discount? The funding discount for the low income, uh, assistance program? Or this is gonna be another budget deficit from the general fund?
I'll, I'll begin by answering that, that when the budget was adopted by the city council in June, we did. Um, with council direction, did anticipate a, some sort of rate adjustment for the water and sewer. At the time, there had not been discussion regarding a low income program, so the adopted budget doesn't contemplate that. Um, the addition of the low income program discussion in this report is based on subsequent discussion that occurred in July and August. Um, given the, the actual rates that were recommended or proposed, um, the, the need to maybe potentially provide a discount. So this would be an addition to the budget, uh, for the fiscal year. I'll defer to Mr. Kemp if he wants to add anything. Is that accurate? Okay.
You agree, Peter?
Uh, yes, Councilmember, thank you. Yeah, this would be, uh, this, the, the, the support, uh, from the general fund to assist with this low income, um, program would be in addition to. Anything else that we've budgeted and if we were to move through with, uh, move forward with the water rates presented tonight, uh, the phase out of those general fund subsidies. Um, you would, you would add this on essentially to those phase outs, to those amounts.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Polito, questions or comments?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh. Couple of comments and then some questions. Uh, first, I really appreciated. Our mayor really just speaking directly to, uh, the challenge that we have. That either we. Pursue what staff is recommending and we will have an ongoing, uh, annual cost of thirteen point one million. Versus if we do nothing, that it would be eighty one million dollars. So that's kind of a no-brainer. Uh, I think just. Based on that, I, I, I think it's pretty apparent what we need to do on recommendation number three to actually wait for reading and adopt. So, uh, you know, at the appropriate time, I'd like to make the motion for that. Uh, but also I'd, I'd like to say that if we're gonna do this and we, and we, uh. You know, we, we have in front of us the opportunity to. Minimize or mitigate the adverse impacts of this decision on those most vulnerable in our community. I think we have a social responsibility to do so. Um, I appreciate what staff has put together. Um. And given us a wide range of options. I'm glad that, uh, we have public comments because Ms. Pasquale spoke to exactly what I was, uh, getting at, uh, that. There might be some who might not be eligible at, say, the thirty two point one percent level. But may, maybe might be eligible for what I suspect the VERA program that, uh, Edison has is for that very purpose. That there, there might be some folks who just need a little assistance, not, you know, the maximum assistance. Uh, I, I think we need to explore that full range of options and then we need to also give. Um, the, the latitude to staff in order to, um, bring back to us. Uh, but I, I would like to, at the appropriate time, um, make the motion for item two A and implement a low income assistance program. With a fixed bimonthly discount of forty dollars, um, un, until staff comes back, uh, otherwise. Uh, that provides a full range that's aligned to the real needs of the community. And I'd love to see staff do their due diligence to. Really identify what the true needs are. Because you're right, you know, old census, uh, information is, you know, not going to capture the current needs in this economy. Uh, where affordability is the main concern for, I mean, it's all the households that I know. So going forward, this is definitely existential crisis for, for the city. That if we, like Mary Okuyama said, that there hasn't been the type of, uh, moral courage on the immediately preceding council. Because I was a part of the council that did something in twenty fourteen. But that was insufficient because it didn't, uh, take into account the capital improvement, um, projects that. Man, i- i- if we don't do it, then who's gonna do it? You know, we, we have to invest in the system because if the system breaks down, then that, that's actually a. A public safety issue. It's not just water that, you know, we drink and we use to bathe in all of that, wash our dishes and all that. But, you know, if, if, if the system breaks down and there's some horrible, uh, issue that is brought about because of decaying, rotting. Uh, failing systems, then you're looking at a serious potentially public safety issue. I've always felt that way. A lot of people don't look at our water and sewer systems as, just as important as keeping the public safe on the streets, in the neighborhoods from the criminals. But if our water system and our sewer system fail, then we've really failed the people. Regardless of how much they make, however much they could, um, bear, bear the, the cost of what we're proposing. Uh, just so that they could pay their fair share. So I, I think is incumbent upon us if we're going to think about the organization and the sustainability of this organization. And to continue to have a healthy reserves for a rainy day. Well, I, I, I think this is more than just a rainy day that's coming. I mean, this is. We're coming up on maybe perhaps a perfect storm that could really put us under. So I think we need to act, but at the same time, we need to be compassionate to those who might otherwise be. Adversely impacted and it might drive them to say, you know what? I can't handle this and I gotta move out of here. And then that would be really sad. If I made a decision that forced a longtime family. Uh, that has really invested and believed in this community and stuck here for generations to have to say, I can't afford Cerritos anymore. Because the leaders who didn't do the right thing, um, made it unsustainable for me to stay here. That's what I think about. Those are all the comments I have. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mayor Protem Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you again to staff for the presentation. Uh, I'm pleased to see that this council has done their due diligence by addressing the need to reduce general fund support. And by retaining water resource economic to conduct a comprehensive water and sewer rate study. It was a prudent and responsible thing to do. Our city has subsidized water for many years. That means part of your water bill has been covered by the city's general fund. Money that also supports public safety, our parks and our streets. But we've reached a point where subsidies are no longer sustainable. Continuing to subsidize water rates diverts funds from these priorities. We, as a council, attend many conferences and workshops and in these sessions, it is repeatedly said. That enterprise services should not be paid by the general fund. Rate payers need to cover the actual costs of delivering water. This ensures the system remains financially stable and can meet future demands. This aligns with how other utilities like electricity and gas are billed. Some have also asked, as, uh, Councilmember Say brought up earlier, that why don't we just cut funding for the CP, CCPA? Cut funding for cultural events, uh, cut funding for sister cities, um, instead of raising our water rates. Um, cultural events are not the problem. They're part of the solution. Uh, cultural events like festivals and community events are not luxuries. They are investment in the community's well-being. It brings, um, economic vitality, vitality and civic pride. These events attract visitors, support local businesses, create revenue through our sales tax. They've also foster inclusion, celebrate diversity and make our city a vibrant place to live. Water service are funded through utility rates. Cultural programs are funded through the general fund. Or dedicated, dedicated grants. These are separate budgets with separate missions. Using cultural funds to subsidize water rates would be a short-term fix with a long-term consequence. It would undermine the very programs that bring our community together. We can do both by funding water through rates and cultural events through smart budgeting. This is all about balance. We're not choosing between water and culture. We are choosing to fund each responsibly without sacrificing one for the other. Uh, these past few months, months, council and staff had been meeting with members of the community. Through meetings, whether it was one-on-one, uh, or in a small group setting. Residents and had opportunities to ask questions. There are still many opportunities for the community to get their questions answered. Uh, there will be community informational sessions that will be held on November seventeen, December eight and January fifteen. So I encourage our residents to attend these, uh, informational sessions. And if you're not able to attend, to please call City Hall. Our staff is more than happy to assist. I am in support of a low income assistance program. Um. However, I'm mindful that this will also be taken away from the general fund. However, our city does need to take care of our residents that will be financially impacted by adjustments to our water and sewer rates. However, this council needs to find options or other opportunities to increase our revenue stream. I've said it before and I will say it again, a sales tax measure is paid by every consumer that is coming to our city. It's not only paid by Cerritos residents. We need to capture this revenue from, from non-Cerritos residents. We need to capture this revenue from non-Cerritos residents as well. So I am in support of the low-income assistance program and I would be happy to second your motion, councilmember Mark Palito, on the suggested rate that you wanted. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Thank you to my council colleagues for your questions and your comments. It was very informative to hear that robust discussion and conversation and questions and answers about this very important matter before this city council tonight. Councilmember Palito, did you want to make a motion?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. This time, I'd like to make a motion to provide direction to staff regarding a low-income assistance program by selecting the following. Implement a low-income assistance program with a fixed bimonthly discount of $40 and to waive the full reading of and adopt the resolution in the city council of the city of Cerritos adopting the 2025 Water and Sewer Rate Study and setting a proposition 218, public hearing date of January 26, 2026, to consider proposed annual rate adjustments for water and sewer services over a five-year period from fiscal year 2025-26 through fiscal year 2029-30. Thank you.
Second?
It was moved by councilmember Palito, seconded by Mayor Protem Johnson. Let's vote.
The motion passes on a vote of five to zero.
Thank you, council colleagues. The next item is 9B, library budget and Sunday closure. City manager, do we have a report on this item?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. Item 9B is an informational report regarding the Cerritos Library. The presentation will be given by Library Services Manager Eric Cardoso. And following his presentation, he and Ms. Hilton and I would be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Lopez. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the city council. Staff has prepared a report that includes the Cerritos Library's 2025-2026 fiscal year operating budget and projected revenues. The report also addresses the implementation of the city council's direction to close the Cerritos Library one day per week. The Cerritos Library's 2025-2026 fiscal year approved budget is $5,626,151. The Cerritos Library's projected revenues for the 2025-2026 fiscal year total, $197,720. As part of the fiscal year 2025-2026 budget review process, the Cerritos City Council approved a modification to the library's operating schedule in response to budgetary constraints. Effective November 9, 2025, the Cerritos Library will be closed on Sundays. Sunday was identified by city staff as the most appropriate day for closure. The determination was based on visitation data that showed the lowest patron attendance is on Sundays. Additionally, Monday through Friday, students from the high school and elementary schools visit the library at the end of their school day to study, conduct research, and participate in library programming. The Cerritos Library's closure on Sundays is estimated to save $200,000 during the 2025-2026 fiscal year. Staff recommends that the Cerritos City Council open public comments, receive and file this report, and direct staff as appropriate. This concludes my report. And at this time, City Manager Robert Lopez, Director of Community and Cultural Services Annie Hilton, and I would be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for the report. Eric Cardoso. And thank you for also the agenda report, Annie Hilton. Do we have any questions from the council, councilmember Say?
That is not this moment, Mayor.
Councilmember Hong?
No, thank you.
Councilmember Palito? Mayor Protem Johnson?
Yes, I do have one question. Thank you, Eric, for the report and Annie as well for preparing this report. I just have one question. Will any employee that was scheduled to work on the Sundays, you know, that were closing, will they be fired or laid off due to the Sunday closures?
Thank you very much for your question, Mayor Protem Johnson. To answer your question, no, in response to the Sunday closure and, excuse me, the direction of Sunday closure, no staff will be laid off or let go. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric. I'm very pleased to hear that. That's all.
Thank you. Okay, so thank you for this agenda report and, you know, it shows that the, on page one, it shows that the the budget for personnel expense is $4,921,821. And I just wanted to confirm that the the city, this city council dealing with our budget constraint situation, you know, and and and, you know, we just had an agenda item about the the tough decision regarding the water and sewer rates where we've hemorrhaged 33, over $33 million of our general fund. And then there's another 15 million that that was looming for this fiscal year. And I'm so proud of the city council to make the important decision to to deal with that head-on. We also had to take, we also had to take that into account with the library where we, when this budget was presented to us, the budget was over $5 million. It was $5,121,821. And it's correct, is it correct that the the closure of the library one day is what reduced the personnel expense from $5,121,821 by $200,000 to less than $5,400, $4,921,821? All of that savings came from the personnel expense side, right?
Thank you for your question, Maker, excuse me, Mayor Yokoyama. That is correct.
So we did not touch the operations and maintenance numbers when we cut the $200,000 from the budget. It was, it all is related to the city council in an effort to deal with the $2.9 million budget deficit we were facing in the budget approval process. We got that down to $407,000. We cut the deficit by about $2.5 million. And $200,000 of that came from the tough decision that we cannot stay with the status quo and we needed to find some savings in the library also.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, that is correct.
So we left, we left the operations and maintenance alone with that decision, right?
Thank you. Yes, that is correct. So the $704,330, that has not been cut in response to the closure. That is correct.
And thank you for clarifying. You clarified that staff, the city, including you, Library Services Manager Eric, you looked at the the facts of the library. You looked at the patron numbers. You looked at the utilization of the library. And you and the team, the city hall team, determined that the day would, the day of closure that would impact the least amount of patrons is Sunday. And that's what you, that's what you advised the council, right?
Yes, that is correct, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric. So, you know, I want the library to continue to be a jewel of our city. And this agenda report explains that the the approved, the amount approved by this city council for operations and maintenance was $704,330. Okay? So you, in connection with the city council's recent, you know, when, back in June when we approved the budget and the city council, we asked the city manager to look at the operations and maintenance numbers and analyze those and give us a suggestion on if there's other ways we can address our budget deficit, our approved budget, which has a budget deficit of 407, had an approved budget deficit of $407,000. So on August 27, 2025, the city council received a memo from you and Annie Hilton and and Robert Lopez. And you explained in this memo that under our operations and maintenance line items, specifically books and library materials, and the line item in the budget, approved budget, was $261,500. You advised the council, you and Annie and Robert in the memo, advised the council that we could reduce that books and library materials account by $50,000. And your words are, "without significantly impacting the development or overall quality of the Cerritos Library's circulating book collection." Why isn't that information in this agenda report? October 27, 2025. Can you please explain if you still agree with what you said in August 27? That we can, the city council, the city could reduce the books and library materials account by $50,000 without significantly impacting the development or overall quality of the Cerritos Library's circulating book collection?
Thank you, Mayor, for your question. I'd like to please refer to page two of the agenda report, which indicates the allocation for books and library materials could potentially be reduced without significantly impacting the development or overall quality of the Cerritos Library's book collection. It should be noted, however, that Baker &amp; Taylor, the longtime vendor for library book purchases, recently announced the company is ceasing operations. Staff is in the process of researching a new book vendor. And it is anticipated that with less competition for library book vendors, cost increases may result. So we are indicating that, yes, the book budget could be reduced. If so directed by the city council, we certainly would carry out that direction. We do have a bit of uncertainty, however, there's only a few vendors that exist in this marketplace. And Baker &amp; Taylor, we just were informed about two weeks ago, longtime vendor of library books. They serve about 6,000 public libraries in the country and very suddenly announced they're going out of business. So we just have a bit of uncertainty as to how that may affect book purchase prices. And we are definitely working to identify a new vendor. Unfortunately, the marketplace is somewhat limited in terms of our options.
Okay, but, you know, where where does this, where where, how did, how did you and Eric and the city manager's office get to this conclusion without any any facts before you and this city council? How do you just get to the concluding sentence? It is anticipated that cost increases may result. Where did you get that? Because when I read this agenda report and I noticed that you left out the statement from the previous memo to the council that you concluded that we could reduce this line item by $50,000 without significantly impacting the development or overall quality of the library's circulating book collection? When I got this, you know, I Googled Baker &amp; Taylor's closure and I read numerous articles about their closure. And in none of those articles did it point out the fear that prices are going to go up. What the articles talked about was the challenge in the timeliness of getting the books from the market. It talked about being patient. The articles talked about being patient in getting the materials. I read that a number of times about being patient to get your orders. None of the articles talked about prices going up. It talked about companies and companies coming in to fill the void, companies coming in to increase market share. So how come you're telling us that cost increases may result? Who, where did you read that or who determined that?
The report indicates that cost increases may result and that is based on free market, how they operate. And when there's less competition, typically prices increase. And also, I should note that our contract that we had with Baker &amp; Taylor, we were receiving up to 45% discount on certain books. So we had a very favorable contract. We were receiving a very nice discount on our book purchases. And we absolutely will adjust as directed by council and work within whatever budget allocation the library has provided.
So like I said, you know, you guys, you gave us, you gave us in this agenda report that came out last week, Wednesday, this information about Baker &amp; Taylor announcing that it's going to cease operations. I read the articles that I Googled. They're they're going to be, they're anticipating closing at the end of this year or the beginning of next year. So they're still open. They're going to be open for a couple more months. And then something's going to happen. You know, it sounds, it sounds like, you know, I understand you're 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 telling this council that you you anticipate that cost increases may result. I just find it to be speculative because, again, none of the articles talked about pricing issues. It talked about timeliness. It talked about getting the materials you ordered. And the reason why this is significant to me is because you had a memo that you gave us, this council, just a couple of weeks ago, where you said that we could reduce it by $50,000 without impacting, without significantly impacting the library's book collection. So are you now saying that we, what are you, what is, what, Robert, what's the answer? So can we, can this council responsibly reduce the the books and library materials account by $50,000, by zero? What what are you advising us today? What advice are you giving us today, Robert?
To answer that question, I would I would ask for the council's sort of policy direction as to what degree do you want to see a reduction? Whatever the direction is, staff will make sure that, you know, we are within budget. I wouldn't eliminate the line item altogether because we, there are new books that come out frequently throughout the year and to remain.
Nobody's talking about eliminating the account altogether.
Yes.
Nobody's talking about reducing it to zero. You guys advised us a couple of weeks ago to reduce it by $50,000 from $261,500 to $21,500. So is that, are you, are you no longer agreeing with the recommendation that you guys gave us a week ago? And you're saying just leave it at the $261,500 because you are speculating and anticipating that prices are going to go up so much that we can't cut it at all?
We don't know whether prices will go up. There's uncertainty there. If the council were to direct to go up to $50,000, staff, as was mentioned, would work within that allocated budget. Work within that allocated budget.
So. You know, I looked at the I looked at the budget that we approved. And. Um, a year and a half ago. The actual amount spent on this line item. Books and library materials. The actual amount spent a year and a half ago, uh, the two thousand twenty three, two thousand twenty four fiscal year. Was two hundred six thousand. Peter, do you have a number for us on what we think the two thousand twenty four, two thousand twenty five actual numbers are gonna be?
Yes, thank you for the question, Mayor. Um, I'll I'll note that, uh, you know, we are still going through our audit and things are subject to change. Um, but we don't anticipate too many changes here. Uh, we're looking at uh just under one hundred eighty thousand dollars uh for fiscal year twenty twenty five.
So. It's uh almost. It's almost uh four months after the end of the fiscal year. You're getting ready for the act for. And this line item for the twenty four twenty five fiscal year. You're looking at it being about a hundred eighty thousand?
Oh, that's correct.
Okay. Okay, so you know, I just I I I wanna be a good, I wanna be a. A a a good steward of our Cerritos residents taxpayers' dollars. And when we're dealing with. A prized jewel of our city, the Cerritos Library. That. Has an approved budget for the twenty five twenty six fiscal year of five million six hundred twenty six thousand one hundred fifty one dollars. Um, I I wanna, I think it's important that we have. Um, we're able to tell our residents that we are. Being fi- uh fiscally responsible with their dollars, including with the library. Including with the CCPA, including with the parks, including with the senior center. So, um, I'm concerned about speculation where we're gonna uh. You know, a couple of weeks ago, say, we don't need fifty, we can reduce the books and library. Materials amount by fifty thousand. And then because of something happening. There's uh, um, we're we're we don't have any any professional, any professional advice. Telling us that, you know, we should expect higher prices. And then on top of that, you know. The it looks like the expected amount we spent for this line item in twenty four twenty five. I'm sorry, in twenty three twenty four. Was two hundred six thousand. In twenty two twenty three, the year before, we spent a hundred seventy five thousand. Just this past fiscal year, we spent approximately a hundred eighty thousand, based on Peter's best estimate. I know that's not the act for number. And then, so I I just think, you know. By going, just automatically going to two hundred sixty one thousand five hundred. Um, we're now. That that meant our budget deficit was higher on the budget we approved. And one of my council colleagues talked about the opportunity cost where if we. Budget over budget, if we over budget for something, then. It makes it harder for us to budget for other priorities of our of our residents. Another thing is. You know, it was confusing to me. When I looked at our approved budget and you look at page two hundred one of our approved budget. And there's three noncapital expenditures. There's noncapital expenditures, noncapital expenditures improvement. Noncapital expenditures FFNE and noncapital expenditures machinery. And machinery is zero. So I was confused when I'm looking at this agenda report. And noncapital expenditures machinery in this agenda report. Shows that we approved thirteen thousand five hundred dollars. So you guys. If you if you take a good look at it and you look at the budget that we approved as a city council, we approved the budget, page two hundred one. We look at this agenda report. With the mistakes in the chart. And then if you look at the supporting. Budget detail that's attached to exhibit one, you know. This agenda report incorrectly classified expenses. Between the three noncapital expenditures expenditures line items, improvement FFNE and machinery. There should have been a line item for noncapital expenditures improvement of ten thousand dollars. There should have been a line item for noncapital expenditures FFNE of thirteen thousand five hundred dollars. And then the noncapital expenditures machinery should be zero. It shouldn't have even been there, right, Peter?
Uh, yeah, thank you for pointing that out, Mayor. Uh, yeah, it looks like that may have just been a uh misallocation earlier in the report. Uh, if you look at the attachment that shows some of the detail.
The budget detail, the budget detail does show the correct.
That's correct, yes.
Detail of the expense of the line items. I'm pointing out that the agenda report provided to the council and provided to the public does not follow the budget that was approved.
Uh, yes, and I'll I'll note that the the expenditure detail that's attached to the gender report. Um, is correct. It does have the itemization.
And I and I saw that when I.
Um, so it was just, it looks like it may have just been an error in that chart in the agenda report. Obviously, the uh the dollar amounts are correct on there. It was just a uh maybe a misallocation on that little chart.
Okay, so thank you for confirming that there's misidentification of line items in the body. Of the agenda report. But the but the mistakes are correct. The mistakes are identified in the attached detail on exhibit one, correct?
That's correct, yes. And and again, the uh the the dollar amounts are are the same across both amounts. The dollar amounts are correct. It's just a um, looks like it's just a little error in alloc- uh identifying those accounts.
Thank you for letting me talk to you about this. Uh, item, this important item. Peter, where this city council. Has approved the library's twenty five twenty six fiscal year budget. Of five million six hundred twenty six thousand one hundred fifty one dollars. And that's why I think it's very important that we transparently. Discuss this at the meeting. So the residents understand what's going on and they understand why we are where we are today. In a budget constrained situation where we have to this this city council had to look at. A number of ways of reducing the budget deficit we were facing of two point nine million dollars. And we worked together to get it down to four hundred and seven thousand dollars. And this was one of the things that. This this city council made a tough decision, just like we did with the water and sewer rates. And I and I'm I'm just so proud of the cu- the courage of this city council. And um, I wanted residents to have this opportunity to understand. Why the library is not gonna be open on Sundays starting November ninth. Thank you for sharing that, Eric, that information. So I'm gonna go to the public speakers. I'm gonna go to the public comments and I'll call on Catherine Pasquale.
Good evening. I'm mostly here representing things that other people have told me who can't be here tonight because I hear they're watching a baseball game.
Is it still going on?
I don't know.
Huh? Still going on, huh?
Um, so, um. I just wanna share a couple of things. Our city library is in the opening credits and in the preview that's been out of the reboot of Reading Rainbow. And so, um, it has driven some interest lately. Michael, the librarian, he's like really TikTok famous, Instagram famous. Is rebooting Reading Rainbow. The millennials are excited. The Gen Z's are excited. The millennials are getting their kids excited. Um, and so people have been like, where is that library that has the rocket ship inside of it? What is that place with the pile of books? Um, and so I did have a friend from out of town and she visited the library on a Sunday and she was like, whoa, there's a ton of people here. And there's families and the study rooms are all taken. And like, I can't believe how many people are here on a Sunday. And then she was like, what? You guys are gonna start closing on Sundays? And so I just. You know, taking feedback I've heard around the community, a couple of things is that. It's on Reddit, it's on TikTok, it's on Instagram. Like, people are coming to our city. Like, you guys say they come to our city for our cultural events. And then they stay and they go to our restaurants and they go to our mall and they go to our other things. They're doing that on the weekends with our library as well. And so while I understand we were in a deficit year, I'm hoping as we do things like. Stop spending so much of the general fund on our water, that maybe we can reopen the library on Sundays and that we don't make this a permanent closure. Um, and so, you know, people talk about the Asian restaurants we have in Cerritos. We're one of the only decent malls around. We're getting some newer, trendier things opening. And so I would just like to, especially right now, while the library does have. Like some extra buzz going on as this reboot is happening to um encourage you guys to make this as temporary as possible. Um, and then the second thing is, I would just like to implore you to please raise your audiobook budget. Because, um, I don't know, I listen to most of my media through my ear holes. And four thousand dollars a year is not sufficient for an avid audiobook reader. I need. I need much more frequent updates to my audiobooks than what four thousand dollars from our city is providing me. So I get on very, very long waiting lists from the county, but I would love our city to do more. Thank you.
Is that correct that the audiobooks is only four thousand dollars? I'm looking at the books and library materials of two hundred sixty one thousand five hundred dollars. Your audiobooks on a different. Oh, audio visual.
We actually, if I may answer the question, please. The four thousand, that is for the actual hard media compact discs. That some people still enjoy using on players or if their cars still have a CD player. We also have additional funding under our books and library materials. The twenty four thousand for eBooks. That is our cloud library service. Which includes eBooks as well as e-audiobooks. And we also have a digital as media streaming services, our Hoopla service. And so I encourage all library patrons to use both the cloud library and Hoopla. Both services have um a nice selection of e-audiobooks.
Thank you. Thank you for public comment, your public comment, Catherine Pasquale. You know, so this is, I mean, we're talking about the library here. We're talking about our s- our our world renowned Cerritos library. And thank you, Catherine, for coming in. This was an agendized item. Thank you for coming in, giving public comment. Uh, city clerk, did we get any any? Written public comment about this agenda item?
Thank you, Mayor. Prior to the meeting, the city council received full text unredacted copies of the one written comment submitted by the deadline for item nine B. Request for copies of written comments can be made to the office of the city clerk during regular business hours.
Yes, and I wanna thank um Mary Ann Brown. Cerritos resident for submitting that written comment. The re- the 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 city council. Uh. Uh, we 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 value hearing from our residents. We value hearing from our residents. And so we received uh the one, as you pointed out, we received the one written comment. About our this library agenda. Item from Mary Ann Brown. Thank you, Catherine Pasquale for speaking. And so somebody else wanted to speak a public comment? You're supposed to put your uh information in the pad, but go ahead and come up and speak and please say your name.
Hello, council members and staff. Um, my name is Nokoyuki Yama. Um, Frank Yokiyama is my. My brother. I just wanted to make a comment today, um, hearing about the closure of the library, Cerritos Library. Um, listening to this today, uh, really touched my heart because as a Cerritos resident. Since I was very young. Um, it shows how I I did come to the library on the weekends. On the weekdays, after school, uh, after my elementary school. Of course, as you know, we didn't have a lot of the. Um, digital um phones and computers that we have now. So I had to come to the library, Cerritos Library, to do my studies, um, to get my research material. So the reason why I wanted to come up here to say this, because it was really, I was listening to this and it was really affecting me because. Um, of the of my, you know, nieces and nephews and my friends and families that are not gonna have that chance to come on Sundays. You know, like I did, because I had to make sure I had to get all my research done on the weekends, you know. So I just wanted to make that comment and I I like how Catherine was saying, you know, please make this temporary. Um, try to, you know, get back the library on on Sundays. Okay. Thank you, Mayor Yokiyama.
Okay, do we have any other public comment? I will now close the public comment period. Does the council have any additional questions or comments? Does any of the council, my council colleagues have any additional questions or comments? Council member Hong.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I want to tell all the residents, I hear your voice. I know how you feel. And personally, library is very important. It's quality of life. I really, it's heartbreaking for me to come back on Sundays, uh, to close uh library on Sundays. But hopefully, uh, you understand this council, we have our responsibility. Uh, to to help the budgeting and everything. So I'm asking everybody to give us a chance. And that's work it together and hopefully we can get through the tough year. And I promise this would be the temporary closure for closure of closing only. It's not gonna be forever, because I understand Sunday is also very important. I do have a lot of people come over during the weekend from different city. They're so excited to look at our our library. This is part of very important. Um, I think it's, you know, sightseeing area for our city and advertising. We're so proud of our library. But most importantly, it's also impacting a lot of working peoples that their schedule, you know, because they only have time to. Study on the weekends, which I understand. So hopefully, that's, you know, we all work together. And we sit tight and get through the tough year. And this is gonna be a temporary clo- closing situation. Um, which I I, from my point of view, this is what I can promise. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Hong. Does any of the council have any? Additional questions or comments? Anybody?
Can I talk?
Yeah, council member say.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I remember I vote for supporting the library open. But after my colleague had pointed out our budget, really, it was from the first was present to us about one point something million. Then went up to two million. And then we had to cut, you know, what's, I understand very well. Sunday is really important for some people, especially for low social economic areas. Some people. They need to use library for study or for information gathered together. However, we are the top ten right now. Definitely, I will look for, looking to the future if our finance. I mean, if we don't run red anymore, and I do think this should be bring, I'm asking staff to bring this back to open our library. Library is really for educational, professional and community focused event for all people will use it. And I myself use library all the time when my kids were small. Now I have a computer home. I use a lot at home at home. But however, though those people may need it for education or business. Um, so I am asking staff, when our budget back to so-called norm and catch up, please put this back right away. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Uh, Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I agree with you, Councilmember Say, that, you know, when, uh, we, uh, start to see an infusion of money. So again, I say the only way is through a sales tax measure. Um, thank you Annie and Eric again for being here tonight. Um, the Cerritos Library is truly a gem in our city. It's a world-class facility that is enjoyed by people from all over. Um, it's not just a, and it's not just the facility that makes it remarkable, it is also the staff at our library that are there day in and day out and they get to make a positive impact on our kids. From our, through our babies and books program, to our lifelong learners that attend our evening family programs, uh, the staff at the library are truly dedicated to making your library experience memorable. Uh, this is why no one ever talks about closing the library. Just like the CCPA and our park programs, the library is funded by our general fund. But unlike the CCPA and park programs, the library does not receive the level of revenue that the CCPA and park programs receive through ticket sales or registration fees. So yes, I agree, at some point we should look into reopening our library seven days a week. Um, and the only way we're going to be able to do that is to have some infusion of money come into the city. Um, I'm hoping that we can bring this back before the council again to, uh, with a new study showing, you know, what a Sunday closure, what a Sunday reopening would look like. Um, I know that other cities in the Gateway Region have revenue streams through their, through their voter approved sales tax measure and their cities are thriving and are able to fund many programs and, and projects. So I'm hoping that's something that will happen to our city where we can reopen the library again. So thank you again to our staff at our library. I appreciate the great work that you guys are doing over there. Thank you.
Councilmember Palito.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I want to thank the members of the public who came and spoke on this. Uh, and I, I, um, I get kind of emotional when it comes to the library because it's really the, the very first, um, interaction that I had with the city. Uh, I was only about three years old, three, four years old around there, but before I started preschool and, and kindergarten, uh, my mom, who at that time was stay-at-home mom, um, would walk me and my younger brother over the freeway from our neighborhood to the Cerritos Library. And I think the first love that I ever had was of, of reading and learning, uh, in the children's section of the library. So I've always had this real deep emotional bond with that building. Uh, and, and as it changed and grew and as I grew, uh, with it, this community grew with it and, uh, the, the world would come to know about the library like I knew about it when it was just, you know, it's, it's first version. So, um, you know, I really wasn't planning to say much, just because I know how difficult this decision is for us as, as a city, as a community, uh, to actually be faced with the, the reality that we cannot, uh, sustain it at a certain level until we get an infusion of, of, of revenue. Uh, and so just to echo the sentiments of Mayor Protem Johnson, um, if we want to make this as temporary as possible, then we need to make the hard decision as a community. See, we're going to make the hard decision tonight, but then the real decision is in the hands of the community. If they really want to have the library that they say they love and we need, then I hope those folks will be first in line to join us in our effort to increase the revenue into our general fund so that we could fully fund it and not have to nickel and dime and say, hey, you know, where, where can we find 50 grand? You know, to save that 50 grand, nickel and diming is not going to get us to fully funding that beautiful building. It's, it's more than just a building. It, it, it has a life of its own and so many come, people, their lives are transformed when they come into that building and they experience what learning is about. It's really what cities do best. Cities, very few cities, because most of them are county-run. We are one of the most blessed communities to have a municipally-run, from the beginning, city library. Um, and, you know, my wife and I have been life, life, uh, members of the Cerritos, the friends of the Cerritos Library, I don't know, quarter century. That was our way of giving back before we even started getting involved with, you know, the local schools and, and the city. And it just pains me that we have to make this decision. But is the fiscally prudent decision to make at this moment in time, along with all the other fiscally prudent decisions that we are making, like the, like the last agenda item regarding our water and sewer rates? So, um, anyone who says that, um, this council, this city does not value the library, that just makes me sad, because that's the furthest thing from the truth. And if they're really concerned about resolving the situation, then let's get together and let's solve this problem going forward. Okay? So, um, at the appropriate time, I'm going to cast my vote accordingly to make the hard decision, but then also I echo, echo the sentiments of the community that let's make this as, um, temporary as possible. But within that temporary time period, I really encourage the community who cares about the library, uh, to get down with us and let's pass the sales tax measure. Thank you.
Okay, thank you to my council colleagues. Yeah, so I, you know, I'm, I'm frustrated that this agenda report failed to give this, failed to give this council, uh, information and guidance on, uh, if there's any action that this council can take regarding the $5,626,151, 2526 fiscal year budget and specifically the 704,330 for operations and maintenance. You know, we were given that advice in a memo to the City Council and then when it came time to have a transparent agenda report before this council and before the public, uh, City Hall did not do the same thing and give us advice on what we can do, specifically what we can do to deal with our budget constraint, budget constrained situation. So, uh, so that's the word I'm going to use. I'm frustrated that, you know, that the advice, when, when, you know, staff was comfortable giving us advice in the memo a couple of weeks ago and I do not want to, for, on my end, I do not want to speculate. I don't want to speculate and I don't want the council to speculate on if we need this full 704,330 dollars, um, in the 2526 fiscal year budget for operations and maintenance specific, and specifically if we need the full 261,500 in the books and library materials line item, even though, uh, the City Council has been informed, it looks like in the 2425 fiscal year, we only spent 180,000. And in, in the two years before that, we spent, uh, uh, I already read the numbers, but it was like one was below 200,000, one was a little bit above 200,000. So, um, those are my thoughts. Do, do any of my council colleagues want to make a motion? I'm just asking if anybody wants to make a motion? Okay. I don't see any motions, so let's move on to item 9C. Item 9C, City Manager, do we have a report on this item? 12880 Moore Street.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, members of the City Council. Item 9C is a proposed, uh, lease agreement, uh, to lease an existing city-owned building located on Moore Street. Uh, the overview of this item will be given by, uh, Mr. Ryan Carey, direct, uh, Deputy City Manager and Active Director of Community Development. Uh, following his presentation, he and Ms. Aguilow, and I would be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Robert. Good evening, Mayor, and members of the City Council. Uh, the item before you tonight is a proposed lease agreement for the city-owned property at 12880 Moore Street. Uh, this proposal supports the city's long-term economic development strategy and the strategic plan goal of strengthening our local economy. The 35,000 square foot industrial building, which was acquired by the city in 2008, is currently vacant and was purchased with the intent to promote business attraction, retention and long-term revenue growth, uh, for the city. Following negotiations, the city has received a lease proposal from Eminent Inc., doing business as Revolve Clothing, to expand its Cerritos-based operations for warehouse, office and return center use, uh, continuing a successful public-private partnership that benefits both Revolve and the city. Under the proposed term, uh, the lease would run for five years with three, a top, three optional three-year extensions at a starting monthly rent rate of 35,375, increasing 3% annually. Over the full potential term, the lease would generate more than $7 million in revenue, retain Revolve's sales tax base within Cerritos and help sustain approximately 1,000 local jobs. Uh, because the proposed lease is not subject to the state's surplus land act, staff recommends that the council adopt a resolution declaring the property not needed for other city purposes and authorizing the lease for commercial use. Uh, in summary, this agreement represents a strategic, fiscally responsible opportunity to strengthen Cerritos economic base, support a valued local business and ensure the productive use of a city asset. Accordingly, staff is recommending that the council authorize the city manager to move forward with the finalization of the lease, consistent with the terms of the letter intent before you. Uh, this concludes my presentation. I'll be happy to take any questions. Thank you.
Thank you for the report, Ryan Carey. And thank you also to Kiana Miranda for this report. Do we have any questions from the council? Anybody have any questions?
I have some comments. Uh, since this warehouse right currently is empty, right? We're not using it? Is, is city using this warehouse for anything else?
Uh, right now, the warehouse is currently vacant.
I see. So I strongly think we should lease this out because that would increase our sales revenue. Thank you.
Mayor.
Councilmember Say.
Yeah, actually, um, I do have two friends now owned by, uh, I mean, now owned on this 12880 Moore Street is on the same block. Two of that, actually, the rate is very reasonable, trust me. And I compared the, my friends own the two other property. I checked it out, it's very reasonable. Good job, well done. Thank you.
Question? Okay, Councilmember Palito has a question?
Yeah, some questions. Um, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, also, thank you to Kristen, Brian and Kiana for the staff report. Um, my question is more historical. Uh, I, I recall the previous use of this building, uh, when it housed the collection that we received, uh, from Mr. Astor, uh, may rest in peace. Um, and then I left the council due to term limits and now I'm back. Um, and, um, my understanding is that since then it's been used, uh, like for storage purposes. Okay? Uh, could, could you elaborate, Mr. City Manager?
Yes, uh, following the disposition of those assets that were referenced, um, the city did, uh, lease the building to another private company, uh, a warehousing distribution company, um, that lease was in place for several years, but that company ended up leaving the city. So the building is now vacant and there's an opportunity to lease it to yet a, a new business.
Okay, so when we used it for storage for the, the collection, uh, we didn't, uh, receive any revenue, but then subsequent to that, um, a, a company was re- leasing it. About how much were we receiving annually for that?
Thank you, Councilman, uh, Palito. The city received, uh, more or less similar to what's being proposed, uh, this evening under a dollar triple net, uh, netting in about 35,000 per month. So I think at that time, back in 2018, 2023, the duration of that lease, we were at about 40,000, uh, for rent. Um, what's proposed for you, uh, this evening is a result of, uh, a few vacancies and the current market rate, lease rate of industrial properties in the city, including those in the industrial park to which this property is located.
Okay. And, and I like the fact that we're making it available to an existing, uh, successful business, uh, that generates, uh, incredible amounts of sales tax revenue for the city. Uh, so I imagine that, that this will help them to, uh, generate even more sales tax for us. Uh, so I think this is a wise, uh, use of, uh, building that we own, that it will, um, not just generate lease income, but also enable one of the private enterprises in town to generate sales tax revenue. So this, uh, multiple benefits, uh, to this use of this one property. Um, I'm curious if, um, prior to using it for, uh, the storage of the Astor collection, if was this part of the acquisition of both that property and the current property that's, uh, just to the s- uh, south of it, um, on 166th Street, uh, where GST is currently located, when the city was proposing a, uh, to relocate the ABC Unified School District there, when there was a proposed joint, uh, project to develop affordable housing over at the ABC Unified School District headquarters? Is that correct, Mr. City Manager?
Yes, that's correct, uh, Councilmember Palito, that the city, uh, the former redevelopment agency had acquired these properties, uh, for a project, um, that ultimately didn't come to fruition. Uh, and so ultimately, the, the properties were made for, um, uh, private business use. Uh, with, they're normally one on Moore Street being a city asset.
Okay. So at that time, it was when we still had a redevelopment agency and we had resources in order to make a very wise, uh, real estate acquisition and then propose, uh, um, a project with another governmental agency that serves this community that would have generated them $3 million for the, for like, what, 55 years? Right? But, um, some NIMBY F, uh, you know, sentiments i- in the community, you know, undermine that, uh, effort. We missed an opportunity and now here, thank you, uh, to staff who helped put this deal together. We are now realizing, um, at least at this point in time, post-redevelopment, the highest and best use for the, uh, for the property. Is that correct?
This is the highest and best use of the property and, and the lease will, uh, enable, uh, essential upgrades to the property that'll improve the, our city-owned asset.
Oh, even better. Wow. Because it needs it, right? All right. I wondered how, um, Revolve feels about this and if, uh, this is going to be, um, uh, even, uh, in greater reason for them to, um, stay in this community? And perhaps their story could be, uh, shared with other businesses, uh, that are of this sex, sales tax generating variety to Cerritos. This, this seems like, uh, a great synergy between a governmental agency put in a bad situation because of, you know, negative forces, uh, turning it into the best situation, kind of like turning lemons into lemonade. Would, would that be a good characterization, Mr. City Manager? Right on. Okay, that's all my questions and comments. Uh, at the appropriate time, I'd like to, uh, make the motion for this, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I will now open for public comments on this item. Are there any speakers on this item? City Clerk, please announce for the record the written comments received for this item.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Actually, uh, we have received no written comments for item 9C prior to the submission deadline.
Thank you, City Clerk. Okay, I, okay, so seeing no speakers, seeing, being advised by the City Clerk, we did not receive any written comments. written comments for this item. I will close the public comment period. Does the council have any additional questions or comments?
No, thank you.
Okay, do you have a motion, Councilmember Polito?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. At this time, I'd like to make the motion to waive full reading of and adopt the resolution declaring that the subject property is not required for other city purposes and authorizing the lease of the property for commercial business purposes, captioned as follows. "A resolution of the City Council of the City of Cerritos determining that the property located at 12880 Moore Street, Cerritos, California 90703, is not required for other city purposes and authorizing the lease of the property for less than 15 years for commercial business purposes and to authorize the city manager or its designated to execute, acknowledge, and consent to lease documentation for the subject property located at 12880 Moore Street, Cerritos, California 90703, in such form consistent with the terms contained within the non-binding letter of intent and as prepared by the city attorney and the city manager shall deem appropriate, including a lease agreement and all related documents related or appropriate in connection with the completion of this lease transaction."
Second by Sofia.
Seconded by Councilmember Hong. Let's vote.
The motion passes on a vote of five to zero.
Legislative items. City Manager, do we have any legislative items?
We do not have any items under 10A or 10B this evening, sir.
Okay, so. Please let me just look at my notes. So City Attorney and City Manager and City Clerk, does this, does the City Council have to start any, take any actions or any planning considering taking into account the major Brown Act updates under SB 707?
Yes, I'll answer that question. Thank you. Senate Bill 707, for background, for those listening, was a major reform legislation on the Brown Act, which governs public meetings for legislative bodies of the state of California. It does apply to the City Council meetings, and a lot of the provisions related to SB 707 do relate to the City Council meetings and specifically required teleconferencing and accessibility. But those will not be applicable until July 1st of 2026. Prior to that, we will be developing a policy with respect to accessibility as well as the teleconferencing option. It is required to be hybrid meetings moving forward, starting on that date, July 1st of 2026. And we will be, we will be working with IT as well as the City Clerk's office and all the applicable city staff to develop the policy as well as the practical framework to transition to that meeting. We will be providing additional insight and updates accordingly.
Thank you, City Attorney. Did you want to say anything, City Manager? Okay. Report from the City Manager. Does the City Manager have a report?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, members of the City Council. I am pleased this evening to welcome two new members to our city team, City of Cerritos team, who are here present this evening. The first is Kiana Miranda. She's our Economic Development Manager, who has been with the city since June of 2025. Prior to joining the City of Cerritos, Kiana has worked in several other cities, including Placentia, Monobello, and Pico Rivera. In those areas, she had managed economic development programs and helping to foster local business growth. So we're pleased to have her as part of our team. She's got a bachelor's and a master's degree in business administration from Cal State Fullerton, and she is currently providing direct support to our Economic Development Commission. So at this time, I'd like to turn the mic over to Kiana to say a few words.
Thank you, Mr. Lopez. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the City Council. My name is Kiana Miranda, and I'm truly honored to serve the City of Cerritos and contribute to the continued economic development efforts. I'm passionate about working alongside our businesses as well as our community partners to increase our local initiatives and opportunities in Cerritos. So I truly look forward to continuing to serve the City of Cerritos. Thank you very much.
And Mayor, I'm also pleased to introduce Jesse Raymundo, who's just started last month in the City Clerk's office. He's our City Clerk Specialist. He is a graduate of USC, where he received a Bachelor of Science in Policy Planning and Development. He has over nine years of experience working in the city clerk profession. Most recently, he provided support to a city in Oregon prior to joining us here at the City of Cerritos. So we're excited to have him provide now a fully-staffed City Clerk's office and doing and providing many initiatives for the city. So at this time, I'd like to turn the mic over to Jesse to say a few words.
Thank you, Mr. Lopez. Again, my name is Jesse Raymundo. Thank you for having me, Mayor and Council. I'm excited to be here. I want to give a special thank you to Cindy and Alicia for your guidance and leadership in these past couple weeks and really easing me into the position. Excited to learn more about how I can serve the office, the City Council, and the community. And I'm just happy to be a part of the team. Thank you.
And those are the updates that I have this evening, Mayor. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, City Manager. Thank you, Jesse, for coming to the City Managers' offices and the City Council offices and helping us with our City Council responsibilities. I appreciate meeting you in the City Managers' offices. And thank you, Kiana Miranda, for a successful Agenda Report 9C. Good job. City Council Communications, I will start with Jennifer, Councilmember Jennifer Hong, City Council Communications.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to report very shortly, briefly, on October 16, I did join the La Palma 2025 State of the City nighttime meeting to learn what's what's going on with our surrounding cities. So it's very important, and I have my city colleague and city manager is also attending that meeting. And October 18 is the 17th Annual First CEB Golf Classic Tournament at the Ironwood, you know, night golf course. And the turnout is very good, and then it's very, it's a very good program. And the city has been supporting this for a long term. And I am very happy to see that all the Marines, the people shows up, they play golf, and we all have a good time. It was a great turnout for the fundraising and the mayor and our city colleagues. They all attending there. Make even the event is more very supportive from the city, and they're very happy about this. And I'm glad this whole event turns out great. Thank you very much for the city helping hosting this great event. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Hong. Councilmember Say.
Thank you, Mayor. For the last council meeting, I attended several events directly related to my appointed position, including activities with the First CEB and the school district. October 18, I attended 17th Annual First CEB Golf Classic Marine Event at the Ironwood Night Golf Course. As always, my purchase of silent auction and Ruffel tickets brought me luck. I won few prizes, and I feel very blessed. October 19, I joined the Cerritos Artisha Roti Club Shrimp Boil and Benefit at the Artisha Portugal Hall. The shrimps were delicious. Hopefully, next year, they will consider using CCPA. And absolutely, I do need to watch my cholesterol level. October 25, which is a Saturday, it was a very busy day for me, attending four wonderful events. I started with the Bellflowers Unified School District Cancer Walk, completing my two and a half laps around the football field. Good exercise when supporting cancer patients. I wish them strength and healing. The next, I attended ABC USD 60th Anniversary Celebration, where the Dr. Small was gave a great keynote about our district history. It was a nice reconnecting with my former colleague, including Ms. Bizer and Ms. Olympia Chan. Congratulations again to our school district. Then I stopped by Saha's Fun Mela at the Don Canaby Park, a beautiful event celebrating diversity, unity, and awareness while standing against hate and domestic violence. Finally, I visited our Sheriff's Scary Jail. Events, special thanks to our sheriffs and doctors. I mean, Captain Strong, you did a great job. I just wanted you to know. It was really great. I really enjoyed it. I see a lot of people participate there. I want to thank you, our staff, for your wonderful work and supporting such fantastic community gathering. And thank you, Mayor, for allowing me to share my community visit and activity report. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Say. Councilmember Mark Polito.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Since our last City Council meeting, I attended a few events in neighboring cities. For the City of Cypress, I was pleased to attend the State of the City address by Mayor David Burke. I did a great job, and it's just great to learn more about our neighboring city just on the other side of Coyote Creek. And then on October 24, I was invited to attend the City of Los Angeles' Celebration of Filipino-American History Month and the lighting of City Hall, joining with Mayor Karen Bass and Councilmember Isabel Gerardo. I very much enjoyed that and also was asked to be part of the presentation of the honoring of Councilmember from Artesia, Melissa Ramoso, for her years of dedication to the community. And then just yesterday, I was invited to attend to deliver the keynote speech at the City of Carson's Filipino-American History Month and Celebration of Larry Itlion Day also, actually to fill in for really a true trailblazer for California, Cynthia Bonta, who happens to be the mother of of our current Attorney General Rob Bonta, as she was one of the original strikers during the Great Delano Grape Strike 60 years ago that was started on September 8th in 1965, that pretty much gave birth to what is now known as the farmworker movement, made famous by Cesar Chavez and a living legend, Dolores Huerta. So it was just humbling and an honor for me, not just to serve our local community, but to be in partnership with the neighboring cities in all of their great efforts. And also want to give congratulations to the City of Carson because that event served as the inaugural event of their brand-new amphitheater over at the Civic Center. So congratulations to Mayor Lula Davis Holmes and my good friends, Councilmembers Jim Dear and Arlene Rojas. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Polito. Mayor Protem Johnson.
Yes, I attended several events, but I think I will forego going over that and save it for next time because at this time, I kind of want to talk about something else. So in line with our strategic plan, goal number four, economic development, I'd like to propose having a Chinese Lantern Water Festival. So before anybody starts thinking about expenses, my goal here is to not have any fiscal impact to the city. This would be like a three-hour evening event where the community celebrates this traditional Chinese festival, the Lantern Festival, the second most celebrated event next to Chinese New Year. It usually falls in February or early March. Next year, it will be celebrated on March 6, 2026, and it marks the final day of the traditional Chinese New Year celebrations. I know originally, we had discussed having this event, a lantern event combined with the Festival of Friendship, but after much consideration, I think it should be celebrated separately from the Festival of Friendship and have a true lantern water event, which is something that the community cherishes. I've already been in communication with the LA County Department of Parks and Recreation, and they are agreeable to having a Chinese water, Chinese Lantern Water Festival at Don Canaby Regional Community Park. I've done myself, in my job as a Field Deputy for Supervisor Janice Hahn, several events at Don Canaby Park, including the annual fishing derby hosted by LA County and the City of Cerritos. So we would typically set up the, near the lake area that is closest to the flagpole. We could have a stage, sound system, and tabled activities. So a similar event to this was in our financial program for 25, 26, or actually 24, 25, and it was budgeted at $5,500. So I expect the funding for this event will probably be pretty much the same. However, I would like to secure sponsors for this event and thereby not have any fiscal impact to the city. Therefore, I'm asking council consensus to direct the city manager, to direct staff for a report back on having a Chinese Lantern Water Festival on March 6, 2026, and in the report to include the following. Contact LA Parks and Recreation for the use of Don Canaby Regional Community Park. I've already initiated contact, so I can forward staff the email. Transfer the proposed arts and crafts and any programming related to a lantern festival that was supposed to take place at the Festival of Friendship, and now move that over to this newly-created festival that will also include cultural performances, arts and crafts, and anything appropriate to this event. I'd also like for staff to seek out sponsors to fund this event so that there is zero fiscal impact to the city and to consider having this event as an annual event, establishing the first Tuesday of each March, as in, each first Tuesday of each March, March, as an annual event, if that doesn't conflict with any council or commission committee meetings. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Did you ask for concurrence?
I don't know.
Did you ask for council concurrence? I was waiting for you to ask.
I'd like council concurrence, please.
Council consensus.
Council consensus. Thank you, colleagues. I think this is great. Like I said earlier in my comments, cultural festivals are great for the community to have inclusion, diversity, and civic pride. And I am, I truly believe this can be done with zero fiscal impact. We will find sponsors. Thank you.
What is the name of the event again you have in mind?
Yes, it will be the Chinese Lantern Water Festival.
In March?
In March.
First one, first one, March 2025, 2026?
Correct.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, so you got your council consensus.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Councilcolleague.
Anything else? Okay. Good idea. Okay, so. I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask for an update about the virtual deputy program, but first, let me talk about, you know, I pointed out that today, on today, the City Council on Consent Calendar, we approved our Treasurer's Report. And on this Treasurer's Report, showing the balances of our City of Cerritos funds, as of August 31, 2025, we have under Prop A Funds, And I would like the city, I would like the city to spend, to plan for projects, to spend this Proposition A funds as soon as, as soon as realistically possible. We, we, we have $2 million. We, we, we have two million, two million, two hundred seventy-eight thousand, eight hundred nine dollars and eleven cents sitting in our Prop A fund account. It's a restricted fund. We have parks that need to be, to be repaired and taken care of. And one million plus of that is for Liberty, for one million plus of that is for Heritage Park. So what is, what, what is the plan for the total amount, the total amount of two hundred, two hundred seventy-eight thousand, eight hundred nine dollars and eleven cents? And I've been told that that amount slowly and steadily keeps growing. So what is the plan for this almost two million, three hundred thousand dollars, where the council has been informed that a million of, a million plus of it is going to Heritage Park? What are we spending the other over one million dollars on? We need to take care of our parks. We need to fix up our parks. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate the opportunity to clarify the funds that are listed in the treasurer's report. So code number two eighteen, Prop A Fund, along with two nineteen, Prop C Fund. These are funds that support our local public transit services, the cow and dollar rights services that are funded by the sales tax measures that are provided to the city through LA County Metro. There is a separate code number two-three-one, Measure A Fund, which currently does not have funds, but there's dollars that are saved in accounts at the county, at the regional park district, that when we are ready to draw from it, we apply and then we can receive the funds upon submitting evidence that we've met whatever the requirements are. So as was mentioned, we, with the council, the prior council approval to proceed with updating our policies to comply with Measure A requirements for parks, we are working to submit an application for Heritage Park to use funds for the island. And it's about a million dollars, I believe, that we can access. So that's underway right now. And when the money is received, I believe it'll be, it'll show up in this fund. I'll defer to Mr. Kemp to clarify that aspect.
And, and what is the balance of our Measure A funds? Because I was told it is over two million dollars.
Thank you for your question, Mayor. I can answer the first part about why you're seeing a zero-dollar balance on our treasurer's report. And that is because the Measure A funds in particular are a reimbursable grant. And so we are, basically, we receive the funds after we've expended them. So we get approved for a project, we spend the funds, then we apply for the reimbursement for that project. So the revenues and expenses match each project. I don't know the current balances for the Measure A fund at the county level. Either our Director of Public Works or our Director of Community Cultural Services may have that information, or at least as of the last agenda report related to that item.
Yes, I don't have the exact number. It is, you're correct in that it's close to two million dollars, but I'm, I'm looking for the number now.
And a part of that two million is dollars for new projects, such as example of Heritage Park, but there are also maintenance dollars under that program that can be used to make repairs or major upgrades to facilities that previously received that funding. So one example of that was a couple of years ago, we redid the flooring at CPE in the major, in the large room there. We also repaired and replaced the movable walls. That was funded also through that program under the repair and maintenance portion of the Measure A program.
Yeah, I remember then when we had the agenda report where this city council approved moving forward with policies so that we can be eligible for the Measure A funds that used to be called Prop A funds, right? And now there's a new Prop A fund that you informed me that's what the new Prop A fund is. The new Prop A fund is regarding metro. But the current Measure A funds used to be called Prop A funds. But the new Measure A funds, there was an amount that was in the agenda report, and staff told the city council that right around the same time that we had that agenda item at the city council meeting, additional monies, what we were, the City, City of Cerritos was informed that additional monies had just been allocated to the City of Cerritos to increase that amount available to us. So I was told that it's over two million dollars. So, so if you can just clarify one more time, what parks are we spending that money on in addition to Heritage Park?
As of now, we have plans just for Heritage Park, but with the opportunity to use monies for other parks, we're looking at what can be eligible. There are needs to replace, for example, playground equipment and some surfacing areas, but we are looking into whether the funds can be used for that type of project. At neighborhood parks, for example.
Yeah, but it's, it, 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 there should be an answer. Either we can use it for those items you just listed, or we can't. So we have about two million dollars or over two million dollars in Measure A funds. I would like to take care of our parks for our residents and for the visitors, our park patrons. I would like to, to this Measure A money to reimburse us for expenses, eligible expenses we make to fix up our parks. So it doesn't help our residents and the patrons visiting our parks for us to not make these repairs and upgrades and renovations to our parks and just let the money sit there and not make those repairs and get the reimbursement. So I'd like to just make a request for council consensus for my colleagues, just that, just the instruction to the city manager, make a plan as soon as possible to, to do repairs and renovations and, and maintenance to our parks and then that are eligible to be reimbursed by Measure A funds this fiscal year. Do I have council consensus?
I concur.
Thank you. Okay, so the next thing is I'm proud that this city looked out for, and the city council looked out for our children with the epidemic of vaping. Kids, our grade school kids, including middle school and high school kids were reportedly vaping at school. And we took the action as a city council to ban the sale of all vaping products in our city because we looked out for the kids and we were gonna make it, not make it easy for kids to vape in our City of Cerritos and vape in our, our schools, including those grade school kids and middle school kids and high school kids. So a similar epidemic, a similar danger to our kids is nitrous oxide and nitrous oxide available through whipits. And usually, the City of Cerritos is on the cutting edge and we're, we're ahead of the game. We're ahead of the other cities, we're Cerritos. But other cities have already taken action to do additional restrictions on the sale of nitrous oxide and nitrous oxide paraphernalia in their cities. Other cities have already taken these actions to further regulate and restrict nitrous oxide and nitrous oxide paraphernalia in their city above and beyond what the state is doing. Okay, so we are a city, we are a city about providing safety to our residents, safety, safety to our families, safety to our kids. We provide safety from crime with Captain Drew Strong and his deputies and, and the city council and Neighborhood Watch and our VOPS. But we also provide safety in other ways. As one way we did it is we prohibited vaping. And now I want us to take a good look at the epidemic, the drug epidemic of nitrous oxide being used by our kids. And I want us to consider, like, our neighboring cities, including our cities in Orange County, that have passed municipal prohibitions and restrictions on the sale of nitrous oxide. So it is harder for that nitrous oxide to get into the hands of abusers and kids. Okay, so I ask for council consensus for an, for an agenda item to be brought back.
Concur.
For an agenda item to be brought back. And, and I'd like it to happen this year, this calendar year. So one of the things about our council, our city council, attending conferences where we can learn about best practices and we can learn about ways to do things better in our city, in our cities, is we, my council colleagues and I attend conferences like California Country and Cities Association conferences. And we attended the California Country and Cities Association Conference recently. And they had speakers there from other cities, and they also had the sheriff, Robert Luna, speaking. And Sheriff Robert Luna spoke about a pilot program that was just starting. And I'm looking for my notes here. It was a pilot program that was just starting was the virtual deputy program. And anything that we can do to make things safer for our residents of Cerritos, the city council wants to be, be proactive and work together with Sheriff Robert Luna and with Captain Drew Strong. And when we came back from that California Country and Cities Conference, I made it a point to talk about the virtual deputy program with the city manager and with Captain Drew Strong. And I have good news that Captain Drew Strong took my request to look into the virtual deputy program and he ran with it. And it's my understanding that the City of Cerritos is one of the first cities to have the virtual deputy program. And it's, and it either started or is about to start. And Captain Drew Strong, can you please give us an update on how the City of Cerritos is a leading, is one of the leading eighty-eight cities of Los Angeles County to have the virtual deputy program?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, we are one of the cities to have the virtual deputy program. There are other cities that have it, such as I think Palmdale has it in Lakewood. However, we're the only city with drones and the virtual deputy that I know of. So when it comes to the virtual deputy, sometimes the deputies are involved in incidents while on duty, such as force incidents and things like that, where they sustain injuries. While they're injured, a lot of times we have to put them inside to answer phones or we don't have a lot of spots for them, for the injured deputies. In this particular instance, when those deputies are inside, the spots that they work in the field are filled with overtime. But while they're inside, we, we came up with a plan that we're gonna do the virtual deputy and they're gonna answer the phones and, and take reports over the, over the phone or actually in person on, on almost like a Zoom camera. So the system allows you to schedule a future meeting with the deputy sheriff virtually to report certain crimes or ask law enforcement-related questions. So you can go on there, schedule a meeting and ask just a question that you may have that, that has to do with law enforcement. It also is intended for incidents requiring an immediate response from law enforcement or to file a public, it's not, excuse me, it's not intended for incidents requiring an immediate response from law enforcement or to file a public complaint. The service is being offered to alleviate delayed wait times, provide a more efficient service to community we serve, to ensure law enforcement resources are readily available for priority and emergent calls for service. So there's a form, when you hit the QR code, you can scan the QR code. It's on our city website now and also on the Sheriff's Department website. And when you, when you scan that, there's a form that you fill out and there's a couple of questions on the form that ask you some basic information about what you're trying to do, whether you're trying to file a report, what the, the crime is. Or if you just have a question, you fill that on there as well. It goes by the deputy's availability, so it'll show you available times that you can meet with the deputy sheriff. Once you pick your time, you select your time and the deputy will come on to the screen at that time. It'd probably be about a day or so later. The deputy will come on the screen, you meet them, almost like a Zoom-style meeting, and you report your crime and they can take a report for you. This differentiates from the normal, just sometimes like the sort, I don't know if you guys are familiar with the sorts program. So you can also do the sorts program, but that's only for misdemeanor crimes and not all misdemeanor crimes. Misdemeanor crimes with no workable information. This will allow us to take felony crime, felony report crimes, such as grand theft and, and things of those nature, as long as there's not like immediate workable information or actual good workable information that we can go out and arrest the person right here and right now for the crime. If that's the case, then we tend to want to go out there in person and take that report. That way, we can follow it up and apprehend the criminal that's involved. But we, we think that this is gonna help the public as far as, you know, having more time to give us a call. We can take these kind of reports over the, over a webcam with them instead of having a deputy have to go out to every single house. That way, that deputy can stay in your neighborhood, be a good presence to deter burglars or anything else that's criminal in nature going on in your particular neighborhood. So we think it's gonna be successful. We're in the infant stages of it. Other cities have had pretty good success with it so far as allowing their deputies to stay out on patrol, which is the goal of the, the program and available to the community for life-threatening emergencies and things like that. So we're happy to start it off. It starts today and we're, obviously, it's the beginning. We might have some kinks that we have to work out, but we're pretty confident in it and it's gonna keep getting better as, as time goes on. So we're looking forward to it. So, you know, scan the QR code and give it a try. Let's try it out.
Thank, thank you for confirming. Thank you for confirming that as scheduled, it started today. Thank you. So our residents and businesses can use the virtual deputy program. One of the few cities, one of the few LA County cities to have it. And like Captain Drew Strong just pointed out, we are the only LA County City, LA County Sheriff's City to have virtual deputy and drones. Right, Captain Drew Strong?
Yes, sir. I have to just make one check with Malibu Lost Hills on that, but I'm pretty certain of it.
Okay, until you say otherwise, that's what I'm gonna say. And thank you again for those that didn't hear, but I'm gonna keep, I'm gonna keep saying it because I'm proud of the hard work that your deputies and Neighborhood Watch is doing. But in September, we only had three residential burglaries, the lowest number for the whole year compared to January, when we had twenty-eight residential burglaries. So thank you to the deputies and thank you to Neighborhood Watch. Let me just wrap up with some community events. So on October thirty-one, we're gonna have the Halloween Festival. The City of Cerritos is hosting a Halloween Festival on Friday, October thirty-one, from five to nine PM. The event is planned in partnership with Los Cerritos Center and will take place at the mall near the dining court parking lot. Costume parades, entertainment, game booths, rides, and gourmet food trucks will be there. And an event that's very important to this city council is on Monday, November eleven, we will have the City of Cerritos Veterans Day Ceremony. We will honor those who have defended our nation's freedom by serving in the United States Armed Forces. The event will be held in the Civic Center near the Veterans Memorial. Music will start at nine forty-five AM and the ceremony will take place at ten AM. And thank you, Mayor Protem Linda Johnson. It is on Tuesday, November eleven, on the actual Veterans Day, Tuesday, November eleven. Okay, and then so back in August, my son, Maddox, and I attended the annual Star Trek convention in Las Vegas, where I presented a proclamation to actress Don Lewis. I am excited to announce that next week, Monday, November three, we will be having a special event honoring Don Lewis, who is not just an award-winning actress, but also a singer-songwriter and, and a, and a company executive. On November three, we will have an Evening with Don Lewis, beginning at seven PM in the Cerritos Library Skyline Room. Don Lewis's connection to Cerritos is well-known among Trekkies and Trekkers. For five seasons, Don Lewis was the voice of Captain Carol Freeman, captain of the USS Cerritos on the animated television series Star Trek Lower captain of the USS Cerritos on the animated television series Star Trek: Lower Decks. Viewers of Star Trek: Lower Decks are familiar with the name of the main ship in the show, the USS Cerritos, which is indeed named after our amazing city of Cerritos. Her performance, which earned Don Lewis a Women's Image Network Award and NAAACP Image Award nomination, is, that's one of her many career accomplishments. On Monday, at the Cerritos Library, I will sit down with the accomplished Don Lewis to talk about her career journey. From her starring role in the nineteen-eighties sitcom A Different World to her Grammy Award-winning music and experience leading a nonprofit, supporting underprivileged youth, Dr. Lewis has a fascinating story to tell. Whether you're a fan of the arts, humanitarian service, A Different World, or Star Trek, or all of the above, I hope you'll take time to join us on November three. Doors open and refreshments will be available starting at six thirty P.M., and our program will begin at seven P.M. Thank you to the, my council colleagues. Thank you to all of you, City of Cerritos team, for this meeting. We got a lot of good work done for our residents tonight. Next on the agenda is item twelve, closed session. City Attorney, will you please announce the closed session items?
I'm pleased to honor that there are no updates for closed session tonight, so we will not have the need to recess into closed session.
But that's, that's a surprise. She did not tell, she did not tell us that ahead of time, all of you.
Happy birthday.
That was a surprise.
It's Jack Dilkis' birthday.
So, so since we're not gonna have closed session, I will now adjourn tonight's meeting. Is that right, City Clerk? I will now adjourn tonight's meeting. Good night, and is the game still going on? Bottom or top of the sixteenth? All right. Okay. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Good night.